At our last city council meeting and so welcome everyone. On the February 8th, we moved our regular start of the regular meeting back to 6:30. That allows us between 45 minutes and an hour to talk about the fire station. Project recommendation document that the chief created on December 28th. That was if you recall requested by council. And a recommendation motion made by council member Michelle's. So I'm going to, since I don't see Zach on the line. Chief, if you wouldn't mind stepping us through what's in the document, remembering that we have. Two new council members this evening that joined us in November who may not have seen previous versions. Would you be willing to do that for us?
Sure, I think that's an important step is understanding how the documents laid out and what's. Where we can go from here. So first, this is my statement. This is me looking at the Dexter area fire department. And what the needs are for all three communities. You know, we started out early on and talking about where a fire station should be and. And a lot of different things that went into that decision and I'll talk a little bit more about it, but. I tried to do a strike a balance between DAFD as a whole. And what the city needed or or desired as a whole. Early on and that that early guidance was that the the city wanted to place their building. Where they wanted without. Necessarily getting approval from other municipalities. Or the DAFD board. And so they wanted to maintain it in the city and and things of that nature. So. I'll just go through the document again, I say it's my. Comment because this page two of it. Actually says that that's this is my interpretation and. Doing fire station consulting and design work. So. The next pages pages three, four and five or three and four, excuse me. Basically just talks a little bit about fire stations and and what goes into some of those designs. The scope of this project was that the city wanted a fire station with a 30 to 40 light year lifespan. With that, you come some certain amenities that. Such as planning for the future. How many firefighters are we going to have? Is that going to change over the years? There's two ways that a fire station or fire departments generally grow. It's either by adding new missions, which means new trucks. Or it's adding more people and and I don't foresee that. Dexter is going to add new missions or new apparatus. We'll probably be exchanging apparatus out, but. The piece about. Employees or personnel is important because over 40 years. We could go from having two people Dexter city station to having four full time people and. We certainly don't want to get caught in 15 years from now having to rebuild a station. Because of the the increase in in size or number of people. So. That's in here. The project overview talks about where apparatus could be. What apparatus are proposed for the city station? And I'll talk a little bit more about that, probably more in the question and answers, but. Right now, the primary apparatus that we have at the city station. Two tankers, an engine, utility truck. A gator, a rescue squad and a brush truck. And I think we all know that we need to get an aerial apparatus in the city based on. ISO recommendations and they're the ones that set your insurance rate. So. We're looking at that. Some other additional equipment possibilities are always out there. The heart truck is currently in the city station right now. But we may have some plans to move that. Maybe out to Webster when they open up where we're talking about that a little bit. There's an ambulance sheriff's car. The fire prevention smokehouse that we use in all those schools. Those are other things that could possibly be stored at the the city station. And then you've probably read through the document. I I won't dwell on the remainder of those two pages. Other than the the. Documents that I do cite on page four, those are nationally recognized standards that. We do have to comply to. For most of it or for part of it. Others is industrial recognized recommendations and that's where I pull all of my stuff. Probably the least relevant there though is the Davis Bacon Act. I'm. I left that in there because I'm used to doing government work where you have to. Have mine out minority owned companies and pay union wages and things like that. So. So I'll run down through the table of contents just to lay out how this documents laid out and maybe give you a better framework. I've already talked about the purpose and the overview. So. Chapter two of this, there's three sections. And what that was designed to do is give the readers. An idea of what fire stations need to do. What is the criteria that we put into them? Just as a general basis, it doesn't pertain. Exactly to Dexter. It it just says, here's what we tend to look at when we try to. Site a fire station or decide what the fire station needs to do. How it needs to function. So it just basically gave some general parameters. That that can be used anywhere in the country when trying to decide how to build a fire station. And I thought that that was relevant to the readers, which is you folks. Because you haven't done this before and there was probably some information would be good for you. Chapter three got a little bit more into the weeds of Dexter. What does Dexter city need? And it started out with the site design and selection. Again, looking at all of the sites, we went through a number of exercises and. And looked at a lot of different sites and and the criteria that was there. If you recall, at one point we talked about. Possibly building a station to the north of the the city a little bit across the bridge. But the facility board that was in place at that time felt that they needed to keep it in the city. They didn't want to spend dollars building something outside the city. We looked at a lot of places. One of the the. Criteria that kind of hit it the most was. Fire stations are big buildings and they generally. Any fire station you build of any size has to be, you need about two and a half acres and that's what led us to purchasing. The property on. Ann Arbor Road. It was the last piece of property in the city. That was available that was the size that could handle a fire station. And so we that that was purchased by the board and and really for two reasons. One is i- if you want to build a fire station, the right size. We thought that property would do it. It was the only one left. If we didn't build on that property. And you remodel or model remodel the existing station or did something with it. Then the fire department would have to go someplace else temporarily to be able to. Respond to calls efficiently. Assuming that you wanted to keep some reasonable response times and not have to bring everything in from Dexter township. At the time that we talked about this, the Webster township building wasn't off. In the ground yet or hadn't been started. So. That site became crucial for whatever we want to do to give some reasonable. Options for the board on on how you want to move forward. Then there's talk about the building design section B. What are the things that need to be in the building? What does a building need to do? And if I go over to that section a little bit. So we're talking about page 11. Under section B, building design. I start to illustrate inside the building is. What do we need in the building? What do we need to be able to do? And and you see quite a list of things there. This was not intended to say. That you need all of these rooms or all of these spaces. These are the functions that we need to be able to carry out. Within a fire station. So. The the difficulty for boards like yourself is there's no single code. That says that you need this. What there are are my ocean standards or operational standards in NFPA that says. No, a fire department needs to be able to train. Well, how do you do that? You got to have a training office. You got to have a classroom. You need to place place to store your training materials. So. Those become, you know, prominent parts of the the facility. You're going to have, it says you got to maintain your fire trucks. Alright, so we're going to have base space. We're probably going to need someplace to store tools. Spare parts, things like that. And so all these peripheral elements start to come into play. And and this is kind of loaded with all of that is well, if this, then that. And so. It doesn't mean that every one of these. Bulleted items needs to have its own room. Sometime we can. Combine them. Sometimes we can combine the kitchen and the day room and so that it's one room. Each of the two alone. Maybe 800 square foot, but if you combine them, you may get down to 1300 square foot total, which is. You know, 300 square foot than than if they were separate. So. That's what that section is is there for is just basically to tell the reader that. We got to be able to perform all of these different functions and I'll I'll answer plenty of those questions. Once I get done here. The next section was architectural character and interior design. Add some of that stuff in because everything that you do in a fire station. If if you change one element. It may affect the another element in the station. And so. Making sure that we design the station so that it flows. Well, so that when the. Alarm goes off. That we can meet our response times and not have to travel. Real long distances. For instance, one of the reasons we do drive through bays. We don't, they're not really drive through bays to us. We just call them that for the ease. But what we do is build longer base so we can park trucks back to back. So that when you're coming out of the day room or the kitchen or. Or the administrative area, you don't have to run across 10 long bays. You're just going to go across five bays because there's two trucks in each bay. So. Those are the types of things that we engineer into the building. To help us with our response times and all of that's considered. With the bunk rooms, the the day room areas. The watch rooms, fitness rooms, you know, how is it flow? For firefighters to be able to do their job and meet their response time. The criteria for firefighters from the time the. The notification goes off in the fire station, the desired or. Nationally recognized standard is that firefighters have wheels turning within 60 seconds. So if you you're at one end of the building and the alarm goes off. And the truck you need is at the furthest end, can we meet that 60 seconds? To get out the door. Now. That's a generally recognized standard under NFPA. Sometimes we're much faster than that. Sometimes we're not. But it's certainly things that go into the layout and the character of the building for us to to be able to move around. The next section was supervision and security. Going to have several million dollars worth of equipment in these buildings. It's also a personal area for firefighters to live. So. You want to make sure that the building's pure and safe and. Some of those elements in. But basically the rest of that section he. Is all about different amenities in a in a fire station or Dexter fire station. That we might need section C gets into some of the design elements for. Structural, electrical, lighting, energy. These are just things to talk to for the architect. To be able to put together and make sure that the building functions the way we want it to. So I go over to chapter four, which starts on. Page 16, I think it was. Yeah, page 16. So I'd like to put in interior finishes. And make that recommendation early on. In the building design because. Quite often, you know, people don't. Generally understand that these buildings get used roughly. And if you want them to last 30 to 40 years, you got to build them appropriately to be able to do that. For instance. One mistake that I see often is is. Fire departments, they tend to put drywall in restrooms or in locker rooms. Because that's what we do in our homes. But in reality, that stuff doesn't hold up very well to fire protection and the way firefighters clean. The way the building's used and so. You know, putting in tile of some sort up onto the walls rather than drywall. Will make your building last a lot longer. And be much nicer for you. Some areas, you know, you have. Low grade carpeting, other areas, you might put in. A higher grade anti static carpeting like in the watch room. You certainly going to put either tile in there, put a a non static carpeting in there. What, like I said, walls, coverings and and floor coverings. Can make a big difference. And the last thing I would want you to do is put in something that's not going to last. And and you're going to have to replace it every so many years. So. So we look at all that stuff. There's a a rather extensive chart in there when you get to pages. 18 to 19, that may not mean much to. People that are not architects, but it certainly certainly gives an architect and engineer. Some guidance on on what might need to be in the building. So then we get to chapter five, I gave general references. These are. As I said, there's no one single code. That says this is how you're going to build a fire station, but fire stations are mentioned in many codes. Under the Michigan building code, fire stations are a critical infrastructure building and they must. Must be built. I I said, let me say that carefully. They need to be built to withstand forces like tornadoes or inclement weather. But generally that you can get away with building. Your substations or your satellite stations with a little less integrity. But if your main station such as the Dexter is is considering. The main station here, you certainly want that to be functional. 24/7, 365 days of the year. And if a disaster such as a tornado comes through, that building. Still needs to be functional to take care of the community. So. We build it to a little bit tougher standards than what we would. A satellite station or even a a some other type of commercial building. Like a vast array of NFPA standards and building codes that you kind of have to. Just mesh together, having some knowledge of how far departments operate. Goes a long ways for that. Chapter six, the room titles and estimated square footage is really where. We get down to what my belief is needed in Dexter. And this is looking at the building as a headquarters station. Or main station, however you want to call it. But it is looking at it and saying, okay, these are the things that we really need. And you can see that this list is a. A little bit smaller than the list or a little bit redesigned, I should say, because it. Leaves room for mechanic room, common hallways, possible mezzennines. But this gets down to what I believe that we need in the Dexter city fire station to support our operations the way it is now. And the way it would be in the future or the long term future. So. We start to get down to some square footages in in order to make those functions happen. Now, if you recall the. Plan that that David Gassen put together. Not all of these were in that plan and it's because that. In doing some valued engineering and and looking at a lot of different things, there's all kinds of ways to tweak these things. And you can double up some spaces or make some spaces. When you make them closer to each other, they they may have some reduced square footage. And I think David did an outstanding job of of putting that that. Plan together and I was quite pleased with the work that went there. And so again, these are all adjustable up and down. The the one that that is really. Set, I I guess for the most part is the apparatus room, two ways of. There's all kinds of ways to measure out an apparatus room or bay floor. I gave a couple of ideas in here on how it was measured and I came out that. 8000 square foot would be the right number for the Bay area to do the things that we need to do. In some cases, there was. By having it at that square footage, it eliminated a couple of other rooms that you might have to. Put in there otherwise. But 8000 square foot allows us five bays that are approximately 180 to 100 foot deep. So you can put 10. Have spaces for 10 vehicles in there. If you centered them right up on the doors. And so. That's why the square footage is 16,000. Most some areas that you know, common hallways, it's really hard to figure, but I put 400 square foot in there. But again, we don't have to dwell on those numbers as much. Right now, but those are the what I believe needed to be in the Dexter fire department. And then some additional amenities that needed to go in throughout the building, the electrical plumbing. Things of that nature. And then when you get to the room functions. That is really the specific and that starts on page 24. Those are basically the rooms that I identified early on. That we would need and it tells what kind of furniture is in those rooms. What kind of plumbing, mechanical telephone? It really defines each and every room down to the detail. Of any furniture that's built in or anything that we might put in that room. In order to conduct our business. So it gives the. Architects some real detail about what each and every that one of those rooms are intended for. And those again are really subject to. Discussion, do they need to be that big? Do we actually need to have them? In my opinion, I put them in there because I believe that we do. Then so again, as as you look at each and every room, you see different elements as to why that room. Needs to be what it is. And this is a very standard way that. The programming document starts out with the architects. And then they come back and say, well, you know, if we change this room a little bit. And we add a couple of different things here, then this room can do two functions. And we start to work with the document and that's where David and I. And Courtney had gotten through and and came up with some. What I thought were some some pretty good plans. So. And then chapter seven, eight, nine, 10 and on are just general comments about the project itself. Some cost saving value engineering stuff. That that needs to be looked at down the line. That'll be all architectural work. And then chapter 12. I just put in a number of things from some nationally recognized publications. About fire stations that this really supports. What I put in there in chapter two. As to what fire stations need to be, how we look at them and how we design them. Fire stations are. I think they've at one point they were listed as the second. Most difficult building to build. In the country and believe it or not, the first or the most difficult building to build was an aircraft carrier. So fire stations are just different because there's no. Again, there's no set standard that says it has to be this way. We simply have to look at the operations we need to perform. And then build the building to those operations. And that's a quick overview of it. I'll be glad to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thanks, chief. Questions from council? Everybody want to start? Jamie, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, sure. I'd be happy to start. Thanks for that overview, Chief Smith. I did have the opportunity to. Meet with Chief Smith before being elected to council and I was able to walk through the building, but only once. So I do have. A bit of that in my memory. I have. I think four basic questions and I I think you'll be able to retain them. The first question is just if you could give a general description. Of your history of designing fire stations. It sounds like this is something you've done before. So just if you could brief summary of that. The next two questions are a bit more. Content related. Can you describe at the current location? Are there any? MiOSHA. Concerns or actual violations at the existing location? And then I I liked the the table on page 21. That's where you outline. The function or the room and the square footage. Does it exist? Where you talk about the existing station and the functions and rooms and the existing square footage. For me, I think it would be helpful to see what we have currently. And how that would, you know, then map on to what has sort of been proposed here to see. Where we're getting the the greatest improvement. So. Right now we have five things in one room. We have these five things happening in one room and it's only 500 square feet. And in this new building, what's being proposed is these five things in separate rooms. And then that's why it's X X more square footage. So some. Sort of mapping table chart. From what we have currently to what's existing, kind of like that that table on page 21 would be helpful. And then. Hopefully this isn't too much. So it doesn't need to be answered all in the in the same order, but. I don't know if it it would be appropriate or if it has been done. For DAFD as a whole to give a recommendation about any of this. I don't know. If DAFD as an organization has a a position on what's been presented here. So. Those are, that's the gist of what I have. I'm happy to repeat anything if that was too much, but I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I can work through them. I'll try to be brief, but. These are some pretty big, actually some pretty big questions. So. The background one, believe it or not, is easiest. So I. I designed two fire stations at the Battle Creek Air National Guard. Two brand new fire stations that were rebuilt after mission changes. I built, remodeled one on that base. I helped and assisted in the design work while I was a fire chief in Eggleston Township in up in Meskeen County. And worked with. The A and E contractor even after I left there and helping design that facility for them. I was also involved in the final site. Prep work. In Indianapolis with Pike Township in station number four, which was about. Twice as big as what this Dexter station is is being proposed for. And then when I left there, we were in the process of. Redesigning the headquarters building at that point in time. And I think that project is actually under construction right now. And I've consulted with a number of volunteer paid on call fire departments. So call me just randomly. The one I've done the most work is in Burlington Township in Calhoun County. They're designing a new fire station and they're facing. Some of the same types of things that the Webster Township Station. Was facing being a rural department and and things are a little bit different. And then, of course, the Webster Township, working with that facility. So I've kept up in the the fire architect and construction world. As an executive fire officer, keeping a background in fire service operations. And knowing what we need in order to be able to conduct our operations. In an effective and efficient manner. And and I continually attend. Conferences or seminars that involve how fire stations are built, how things change. Right now with cancer presumption laws or rules. That are out there to protect firefighters. So I stay very well involved in that. And I. Kind of unofficially, I talked to a lot of fire chiefs around the country that. Are are friends of mine through various channels and we're always talking about fire station designs. So. That's pretty much my background there. My ocean concerns. Wow, that that's a. That's a big one, but I will say that. The my ocean did come to this department a number of years ago. And I don't remember the exact year off the top of my head and they they cited a number of things. And if you recall, when you walked through the building. There was a hatch that was put in on the second floor. That hatch was put in because that was going to be the second exit out of the bunker. But it really didn't meet requirements, meet the codes. And so like, you know, my ocean has a habit of turning its head when it comes to fire stations. They don't want to shut them down. But I can produce those letters and those documents and and I think they did enough at that time. To appease the. To appease my ocean. Appease the union and be able to get past it. But I could walk you through and talk about a lot of things that are in that station right now. That wouldn't meet muster if my ocean were to come in and look. I I don't think they would be so kind as they were the last time they came in. I I think one of the issues last time is the only station was the Dexter city fire station. There was no station two or station three. And so. They're not going to come in and shut down a fire station. Per se, they just don't get into that. However, today. My concern would be that there are options and. If that option is that we don't have any full timers in the city fire station because the bunk room. Doesn't truly meet the the life safety code requirements. You know, we could move them out to the other two stations at night and only have them down there during the day. And so I just don't think ocean would be as pleasing as they were before. And that's that's just the bunk room issues. There's, there's a lot of things with building air. HVAC separation between the bunker or the the. Garage or the Bay area and the living quarters. You saw that the the kitchen quarters. And the the workstations, there's not proper separation there. And we have, you know, rodent issues throughout the building with the basement and upstairs. So. That list can go on and on and on and on. I I don't want to dwell on that too terribly much. I think Dan does a great job of of helping us out and and we work really hard to do what we can with it. So that kind of leads to the the third question, comparing the existing with what was put. Or what's existing now with what we put in the plan. That's almost, I I just won't be able to do that because right now our kitchen dining. Our work areas are all combined into one and and it's about 400 square foot. When typically, when you're looking at a a crew of two or three people. It's going to be way more than that. Our apparatus bay, which is a couple hundred square foot, maybe maybe close to 1500 right now. You know, we're doing apparatus cleaning, apparatus maintenance. Decontaminating of the equipment and clothing. The washers and dryers that are in that bay are the washers and dryers for. Cleaning towels and linens and and sheets and things like that. It should not be out on the bay floor, but they are. In fact, my ocean does have a a standard that talks about. The cleaning of protective equipment and bunker gear and not using the same washers and dryers for that. And so the stuff's just in the wrong places. The bunk room upstairs, again, we have two people up there. With only. With only really one legitimate way out and that one way out is coming down the stairs that we call. Non-conforming stairs. And so they're very steep. You, you were there and saw that. You know, the chances of a guy falling down those in the middle of night or even a visitor to the station. You know, we, that's our classroom up there. We use it as a classroom. We have classrooms in all of the stations. But that was the one being used at the city station. And, and we just can't get enough people in that. But it's also our lounge and it's also the fire prevention office. So, and if you go up there right now, it's our EMS storage. And none of the other stations even have. You know, storage space is one of those things that just gets left out when you do a project. Because nobody wants to pay for that kind of space. So we end up storing stuff all over the place. So. I really can't make a good comparison. It, it probably would, wouldn't look very good. But I could try to do something for, for you for that. I think more importantly, looking at the square foot, we need to perform the functions that I've outlined is, is going to be better. And you know, it just goes back to the needing the two and a half acres. You just got to get the square footage to be able to spread this stuff out and be able to do it safely. The last thing, DAFD recommendations. I don't know that DAFD Fire Board, to my knowledge, and Jim Seda's on the line, I see, but. They, I don't know that they've actually been asked to provide anything formally. As to what they think the recommendations are. I will say that there's. The inter local agreement is, is pretty clear that each municipality is responsible for its own. Fire stations and they do that based on what they want for response times. And they've pretty much done their own thing, which is, has created some difficulty because there isn't that great coordination of. You know, can we put up certain offices in certain buildings? Can we all three build buildings of the same size so that we all share the wealth equally? I just don't know that that's there right now. And so in this case, it's. You know, you're the last one to put the building together and everything that we can't do in the other buildings, we need to. Fight and, and work hard to see that we can do it in this building. And it just, it, it's tough to be the last one. But I think that if Jim wants to weigh in on that or, or even Sean. I'm very comfortable with that, but I don't know that their recommendations would probably be too much different than what I've put together here.
Thank you. That was a lot. I'll, I'll digest that and I'll let somebody else go ahead and weigh in. Thank you.
Chief, I think my answer might be a little different than, than what you gave personally, if I was speaking by myself, but. The board has not been asked, DAFD has not been asked for an opinion. I guess to follow up on your last comment though, from Jamie's question. So what, what functions? What functions are we not able to do at the two new stations? That, that this, that this layout here covers.
Right now, the two new stations do not have any office space for fire prevention, for myself, for training. They do not have classrooms that are big enough for us to really bring in our mutual aid partners. And be able to train with them, which is part of ISO's. Requirements or grading scale, if you will, that we train with our, our mutual aid partners. The, one of them has a fitness area, but, well, actually. The Webster Station's going to have a physical fitness room. Dexter Township Station, they've made one. But we should have one in each station so that the crews don't have to go out of their response district in order to. Be able to do physical fitness. The, we don't have a good. None of the stations right now have a decon area. Webster will have one that, that meets code requirements when they're done. But each station needs to be able to have something in it. We get a fire at, at night or get a fire in the winter or something that substantially. Get a large share of our equipment, meaning our structural gear. Gets contaminated. We need to be able to wash all of that. And you can only do two sets at a time. And so having those capabilities in each station is important. So some things need to be done in each and every station. Others can be done a little bit differently or can, we can focus, for instance. You know, we don't. I don't have any place for bulk storage of supplies right now. So I have to buy. Things like paper towel, toilet paper, those household cleaning things. I buy a little bit at a time because I don't have bulk storage areas. The closest thing I have to it is at the Webster or Dexter Township Station on the Mezzanine. But that's all opened up and, and we have issues with insects and birds and stuff. And so I just don't have those spaces in the other buildings at this point. And I'm not saying that we can't work some things out in the future, but I'd certainly like to get a design for the city station and then see where we can go from there. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it's disappointing, I guess, that a new building has birds and insects that prevent the use of storage, but.
I was not here when that building was designed and probably would have advised differently.
Okay, other council questions on Chief Smith's presentation or the document? No questions. Okay, so Chief, Chief, I'm not sure, what are the, what are the square footages? I'll just keep asking questions. And hope Zach's got his hand up. Go ahead, Zach.
Yep, and sorry, I have to go back to my phone today because the lap or the tablet isn't connecting with my new wifi. Just want to be clear that the apparatus that the station would support. Are basically, except for an aerial, what is necessary and used today. Is that correct? All right, thank you.
So Chief, have you, have you? Talked to the Silo Township Fire Chief? About their renovation project?
Yeah, a few times. I've been over there.
What's, what's their experience with that?
Well, they're, they're in a tough situation. That's a stopgap measure just to try to get some more apparatus inside. They really know that they're going to need a new fire station. That one's not big enough for what they're doing. And so that, that's all it was. And, and for Chief Hootie, it was a. It was kind of something that was thrown on his lap and done before he got there. And I don't think that today, if he was there, that he would support that project the way it's being done. But that's really all they did is lengthen the front bays. I think they made another bunk room in there and converted, actually one. They took the chief's office and made it a bunk room and I, I don't even know where his office is going to go now. But they also are building an outbuilding. They've got another building out back that's going up. To store at least one of their vehicles in because that building's still not going to be big enough.
Gotcha. Talk a little bit about the training, the training room. I've been, you know, we've been having some meetings for the. Negotiations, you know, on the inter local with our local 4090 firefighters and we use the. The room at Dexter Township that they double and use as an elections office. And I thought I saw when I was looking at the floor plans for Webster that Webster Township trustee Dan Manzel forwarded. It looks like they have a fairly sizable space. What are the sizes of those spaces?
The Dexter Township, boy, I didn't have those numbers with me. I can look them up here though, but. Dexter Township, I believe is about 800 square foot. And Webster Township's going to be slightly under that. And those are adequate for us to do our internal training. I get 15 to 20 guys in there. It gets a little bit tight. But if I were to try to double up and do a training and have another fire department come over with us. And do the classroom portion and then try to go out and do some evolutions, the, the classroom portion would be very, very tight. In order, I mean, when you go to do a, a main station, you probably want to have a classroom that goes 35 to 49 people. I say 49 because you get over, if you design it for more than 50. Then a lot of other regulations come in that, that you probably wouldn't want to. Deal with. I know that, I don't believe that it's necessary, but if we had a, say a 1600 square foot room where we could do. Training with multiple fire departments. It's been my position too, that, that those rooms can be used by city, other city administrators. To hold meetings and things like that. So I know you guys are looking at doing city council. It may not be big enough for that, but. We're certainly starting to get to that, to that size. So. Having a classroom, sometimes we do classes. We like to be able to host. Classes like the State of Michigan firefighter, one and two, or. Instructor or officer courses. Sometimes you'll get 25 to 30 students in those courses. It'd be nice to host them here than, rather than send our people out all the time to go to different classes. So it's just nice to have a larger room. But those are, those out there are, are in that 800 square foot range. And I don't think that I put much more than that on this one, only because I was trying to keep the size down, but. Certainly a classroom, I mean, you can't have enough classroom space.
Zach, I see your hands still up or?
No, that's just, I haven't.
Okay.
Because it's tricky.
No, no problem. You can leave it there. That's okay. I just, I wasn't, just didn't want to leave you out. Donna Fisher, I see your hands up.
Yep. How, Chief, how often are the training rooms in use?
We train right now, we've cut back a little bit, but we train two Mondays a month. And then that's our normal routine schedule. We do try to do what we call an EMS day once a quarter. Where we do like a eight hours on a Saturday and we bring in an instructor. And we open that up and get. The instructor in and then guys come in and do their medical CEUs. Right now, we've been able to do that out at the Dexter Township Station. What we cannot do is host state firefighter classes. Because if we try to host those or, or conduct them here, then we have to open those up statewide or countywide. And so they require you to have at least 25 students before they'll fund a class. And so we start to get tight on, on space for that.
Thank you.
And those rooms are not just used for training. Those are conference rooms as well. All of our staff meetings are in those. Don does fire prevention meetings and also they, they do get used and, and they're adequate sized for those types of things.
Thanks.
Zach?
Yep, I've talked with a, a couple of folks who do training. One of the things they pointed out is that. Especially for hybrid departments, those with full-time folks and with on-call folks. That they like to do the training. Weekly and one of the advantages in addition to making a station where folks like to hang out is that when you have that training there. Folks are there. So if there's a call, you get to roll right away as opposed to bringing folks in. So is it beneficial for the citizens of Dexter City? To have training capacity within our, our city limits versus having it six miles outside of, out of town? Oh, did I freeze?
No, no.
Okay.
My perspective is that, you know, anything we can do, the more you can do at the main station, the more productive that it is. You're right. If, if we can make the station, that's why some of the things that we put in it. May seem like they're luxury type things, but they really are designed just to make people want to hang around and be at the station because for me, that's free labor.
Okay. Other council member comments? I did want to, we do have a non-arranged portion on the agenda and we're at 6:15 or just about 6:15. Is there any non-arranged participation? Anybody want to speak? I see a hand from Mr. McCarter and. So if you could unmute him and I see Jim Seda, we'll let you follow Jim.
As usual, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. I'm actually going. I'm not going to speak about the fire station, even though I know this is a work session, session related to the fire station. But it's timely for reasons that I think will become clear. Is, are you okay with that, Sean?
As long as you keep your comments to within five minutes so we can, you know, take the other comments, Jim, and then we have got another meeting. The next meeting starts at 6:30. So.
Okay, well, then I start the timer and I, I haven't timed this yet. So. Former State Senator Mo Hood. Wayne County Sheriff Benny Napoleon. Community activist Tom Wilson. Bishop C.L. Morton. MSP Trooper Clifford Taylor Jr. Elder Myron Emmanuel Lett, Bishop P.A. Brooks. Religious leader Willie Mae shared, Wayne County Sheriff Commander Donna Fay Collins. UAW leader Ruben Burks. Teacher and union leader John Elliott, Vietnam War veteran Willie Wilkerson. Detroit champion Marlo Studamire, teacher and poet Brenda Perryman. Detroit business icon Otis Napoli. Basketball coach Dwight Jones, fire captain Franklin Williams. I'm naming them. These are probably names that are for not, not familiar to you. They are. Black Lives That Mattered, Lost to COVID. They are not from this county, but I want to folk, not all, but I want to focus for a moment on this county. And point out as I have some, some other times that we share critical resources, including government structure, recreation, medical care. Economics. It's always been that way. Almost 150 years ago. An immigrant Michigan Central Railroad employee named James McNamara Senior bought my house from Sam Dexter. Signed his name with an X. His son James became one of the wealthiest Detroit lawyers of his time. Second child became Thomas, became a priest at Saint, Saint Joe's. In fact, the family plot is the first one inside the gate of the Saint Joe Cemetery on Baker. You folks may not know that in Washington County, the black or African-American population is 12.3%. But the COVID hospitalizations are twice that rate among that population and fatalities are also twice that rate. I have a proposal to you, Mayor Keough, and to a minimum of one other council member. I am asking that you reach out. To the mayor of 48197, which is at Salani. For a conversation one-on-one with two-on-two. To learn what the concerns of the two communities are. What's the same? What's different? Maybe attend each other's meetings, get to know each other personally. Because so much more important at this particular time in our history. It's about human relationships. It's about the relationships. So I just posed the question, last sentence here. With whom are we in relationship? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Seda.
Hey, good afternoon. Good evening, everybody. Just as a microphone check, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Just for those of you that don't know, I have been a resident now of Dexter for 21 years. I was a village council member. I was the village president preceding Mayor Keough. And I have had the honor of being on the fire board now for the last 15 years. And it's, it's interesting to me that the more things change, the more things kind of stay the same as I. Look around the different squares of everybody that I know and that I don't know. And for those of you that I don't know. Maybe at some point we can chat and talk about the way things, I guess, things used to be at least over the last 20 years in Dexter. But the philosophy, I guess, that I always took was number one, keep the public informed. And I think this is a great forum to keep the public informed. I can tell you from a Dexter area-wide fire department perspective. The board had absolutely zero input into the Dexter Township Station as well as into the Webster Township Station. And in fact, I am now the chairman of DAFD. And I made the point at our last DAFD board meeting. That although Webster Township is getting ready to open a station on April 1st. The, the actual floor plan and the layout has never been. The the actual floor plan and the layout has never been submitted to the DAFD board, which I thought was unbelievable. But yet, at the same time, we are going to be asked to sign a lease on behalf of the DAFD with Webster Township. So thank you very much for this body. Holding at least these public meetings so people can have an input on what we do and where we go. But I guess just a couple food for thought from my perspective. You know, twenty years ago, when I was on council and when I was village president, we had this vision of a city center being in downtown. And that included the farmer's market, which was built when I was on council. The library, which was built also, I was on council. And then, of course, right before that, we had the high school that was built. You know, when the high school was built and the library was built, that money came from an area wide tax base. Because it serviced the entire area. When we look at the fire station. This new fire station, whether it be in the location that's already been. Maybe predetermined or in a location that's still in downtown. Will be funded completely by the residents of the city of Dexter. Nobody outside of the city is going to pay for that building besides us. So I would urge you, number one, to be cognizant. Of the city taxpayer dollars in regards to what we need to ask for as citizens of the city of Dexter, number one. And number two. You know, I know it was part of what we always visioned and looked at, the border to border trail. You know, but in my opinion, having the fire station basically be centrally located to downtown. And at least near the trail. We can hop on the gator and we can access the trail rather quickly. And I think in the location that it's in today. Being able to access that trail, being able to access the park that's there, being able to quickly access accidents that happened in Monument Park. I think as a city of Dexter resident, that's a huge asset to us. And I would just urge this council and whoever's going to make the final decision. To look at this as a decision that needs to be looked at for the next, as the chief said, you know, thirty to fifty years. The building that we're in today, as you guys all know, was built in nineteen fifty five. Nobody envisioned. You know that we would still be there almost seventy years later, but we are. Are there issues with that building? Yes. Could we tear that building down and build a new location exactly in that same spot? I think the answer is yes. But I think. Like I said, first and foremost, let's look at what we actually want to have in the next thirty or forty years. And I would strongly encourage everybody to go take a look at the Dexter Township Station. Go take a look at the Webster Township Station. And then look at ourselves in the mirror and really decide, do we need all of the things in the city of Dexter? Knowing that today, we only make up about twenty five percent of the runs. So it's something that needs to be considered. I'm not saying that it has to be in one location or the other. If it were me, it would be fantastic if we could look at this holistically across the entire Dexter area wide fire department. Unfortunately, that hasn't happened over the course of the last ten years or so. But now is our opportunity to look at the other stations, see what they have, see is, see what we need versus what we want. And move forward with it. And like I said, I'm not here speaking on behalf of the DAFD, but I'm here mostly speaking as a resident of the city of Dexter. And making sure that the vision that we set out for the future is something that we will all be proud of as we vote on the upcoming potential. Bond. Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Jim, for attending tonight. Who am I missing? Looking for hands? Is there any other citizen participation? At this time?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay, Justin, I'm not either. Thanks for helping me check that. Well, it's six twenty five, then. Why don't we? Take a few minutes, let everybody use the restroom or get a glass of water and then we'll come back and start our regular meeting at six thirty. Thank you.
It's Sean.
Thank you. It's the same Zoom meeting, by the way, so I'm just gonna, we're just gonna keep it up.
Thank you.
I have six thirty. I'm not quite sure if everybody's back or not. I see Paul and I see Julie. I see Donna, I see Zach. See Jamie.
Here.
See, do I see why? There's why. Justin, you're back. Alex is here. Bella. Ms. Jones, is your microphone working? How are you?
Yeah, as far, do you hear me?
I can't. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm here.
Great, thank you for that. Okay, then I will. Call the council meeting of Monday, February eighth, twenty twenty one to order at six thirty one PM. Meeting follows our work session on the same Zoom link that started at five thirty. So if you could all join me by saying the pledge of allegiance, I would sure please appreciate it. Julie, if you would leave us as usual, that that'd be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation. Under law. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jones, if you would please call the roll.
Okay, and and as a reminder, you are to tell me your, you know, where you're attending location you're attending from virtually. Councilmember Cousins?
Paul Cousins attending from the city of Dexter.
Councilmember Fisher?
Present and participating from the city of Dexter.
Councilmember Griffin?
Present remotely in the city of Dexter.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Present remotely from the city of Dexter.
Councilmember Knight?
Here from the remotely from the city of Dexter.
Councilmember Michelle?
Present in Dexter City, USA.
Mayor Keo?
Responding remotely from my home in Dexter, Michigan.
Student Representative Alex Gilbert?
Present remotely from Webster Township.
And student representative Bella Malik.
Oh, sorry, I thought I muted. Present from Dexter, Michigan.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everybody, and thanks, Ms. Jones. Item C on the agenda tonight is approval of the meeting minutes from a regular city council meeting that took place on January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one.
I'll move those minutes. Night.
Moved by a night. Thank you. Second?
A second.
Thank you. Ms. Knight, any discussion?
Did not see anything.
Okay. Ms. Griffin?
I think I just noticed two things. The top of page three. The bullet staffing has always been an issue when we are recruiting for new officers. Looks like it's missing an O and the word officers. This is the sheriff's report.
Okay.
And then. Sort of top third of page five. Under L two, consideration of approval of variety dye and stamping dye is misspelled.
Good catch.
That's all I noticed. Thank you.
Oh, got it.
Okay. Any other council comments or observations? In the minutes? Okay, thank you for those corrections. Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the council minutes.
Okay, Knight?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. We have no prearranged participation on our agenda this evening, so we'll move down to item E, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
Oh, move Cousins.
Moved by Cousins. Thanks, Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fisher. Thank you. A second. Any discussion on the agenda this evening? I'm not missing a hand, I hope. Okay. Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Okay, Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries, everybody. We have an agenda. We're now on to page two of our agenda. We have no public hearings under item F. Background to not arranged, I should say, we're back on, we're we're at not arranged participation. It's the first of two opportunities on the agenda for residents to speak. On any topic, we would ask if they limit their comments to five minutes per participant. Are there any citizens or visitors to our meeting that would like to speak this evening? If. You're on screen, please use the raise hand feature that's at the bottom of the window. If you're calling in, you can hit star nine on your cell phone as well. Justin, let me know if you see a hand go up. I say, okay, Mr. McCarter. Please unmute Mr. Carter.
Yeah, well, thanks. I'm. I respectfully request that my comments earlier be transported in time up to this moment. And I plead my case that I have too many Zoom meetings going on today and I popped in when I did thinking, how in the heck did I miss? So much of the agenda and here we are in public participation already. My bad. I'm done.
No, it's okay. It's okay. Appreciate you making the comments and. Thanks for sticking around with us. Yep. Are there any other citizens that would like to speak at this time? Okay, not seeing any hands waving at me or yellow hands in the windows there.
I see no hands.
Okay, thanks for checking, Justin. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move down to communications. There was our upcoming meeting list in the packet. Does anybody have any comments or questions on the upcoming meeting list? It's on page nine to ten.
Paul here, Sean.
Go ahead, Paul.
Well, the chamber finally, I will say finally, again, have changed their meetings, okay? So their their meetings are now theoretically scheduled. Every Friday, Friday at the last Friday of the month, this next one would be February the twenty sixth. They're at nine AM and they are still in the Zoom process. If they do meet, they will be meeting at the. La Fontaine offices up there, okay? At this point in time, they, the people that were involved and couldn't meet on Mondays or Tuesdays, so. They try on Fridays, okay?
I think I think I did get that before, Paul, so it should be on the next. West.
I know, problem. Thanks, Justin. Yep. We have a new, we have a new chair and that's Quayle Pant, who is the PR person for La Fontaine. I think most of you know Quayle from the activities that she's done in the city here.
Thanks, Paul. Jamie?
Yeah, thanks. The one thing I noticed, the first time I read it through, I thought, oh, our work session on the twentieth is missing. From the calendar list, then I read. Later on, and it sounds like that date is not going to work, but I think it was mentioned in your mayor note as being a work session, so I guess I just. Want a clarification if we're having a work session on the twentieth or not, or if that's still TBD.
I don't, I think we're gonna have, we have three people that can't attend on the twentieth, so. I don't think we'll, we'll hold one with only four of us.
Okay.
In in the interim, I had asked. Our interim city manager there, Justin, to to see if he could get ahold of. Scott Manzel and maybe see if there was a Wednesday evening or something later in the month that might work to do some of that. Conflict of interest training, if we could get that. Scheduled, but I don't know that, I don't expect him to have an answer on that. That's just a conversation that he and I had. Just so we can, you know, keep going with some of the priorities that we've talked about.
Okay, thanks for confirming that.
Yeah, yeah, if as soon as we know more on. We'll post it. Or let everybody know, you know.
Thank you.
We're not going to schedule a meeting with with only four, I guess, is what I'm thinking, so. Okay, any other comments on the upcoming meetings? Okay, we'll move on to our first report this evening from our Public Services Superintendent. I think we missed you last time around. Welcome, Dan.
Good evening, everybody. I provided you with a two-week report. I also have, before we get to the report part, I have a couple of updates or a couple of things that happened earlier in the week. We had two sewer backups on Dover Street. One was on the second, and the other one was on the fourth. We got called from the church on the second that they were having problems. We went up, contacted, we looked at manholes, contacted our M and K to come in and to clean it out. When we were in the process of cleaning the blockage out, we ended up getting some sewer water in the basement of 7909 Third Street. I had to hire Michigan Power Riding to come in. It was a, it it was fairly small. It cost us $225. What we noticed when the people were in cleaning the main out, we have a vector truck there. It looked like it was wet wipes was the cause of the problem. Um, so anyway, we got that cleaned out, and then two days later, we had one on the other street, other side of Fourth Street on Dover. Resident called us. We went up, checked out our manholes, brought in a cleaning company to jet that line out. We didn't have any problem with houses during that cleaning. It was six months ago or seven months ago, I talked to city council about how we hit every sewer main in the last seven years in the city, which is a pretty big accomplishment. It cost us quite a bit of money. Looking back in our records, this is kind of where we started, was in that area, you know, Third and Dover and Fifth. Um, what I was thinking, we've got a couple of projects coming up. The one I'm thinking about is Second Street. If we do end up doing water main or any construction there, we're gonna have to bring a camera in. I'm thinking at that time, if we are going to do water main, and we are going to videotape the sewer leads are there, I'll bring them over on Third Street just to check everything out to make sure that we don't have any additional problems over there. But the one side was, it looked like the wet wipes, the other side, it was a little hard to tell.
Any question? Uh, why? As random.
Yeah, I just, I, Dan, I know I already said this to you before the last meeting, but I just want to publicly state that I was the resident that called on the fourth, and Dan, guys did a great job resolving the issue, and thanks again.
Thanks, why?
Onto my report. Underwater, Ms. Diggs, 33, in February, has got to be a record for the city of Dexter. That's, that's what we get during construction season, not February. There's a lot of stuff going on in the city, and we're the first ones that, that realize that with these mistakes that we gotta perform. Also, go ahead. Any questions on that?
Dan, where are most of those?
Um, this, we've been doing a lot of road permits for like Comcast, DTE, gas, putting new gas services in, Comcast with underground, and then going above like next to the wastewater plant. Um, we've got Steve Brower on Ann Arbor Street where the old daycare used to be. He had to cut and cap the sewer and water so he can get his demolition permit. There's just a lot of stuff, you know, UIS, Avalon. They seem to destroy everything up there about once a week and call for, you know, restakes all the time. But, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Just curious.
And below that, I don't know if you guys noticed, but we got that well tube back in service. I wasn't here in the last council meeting. You guys approved the extra money we needed for that new well pump. So we got that all put back together. We did chlorine, did two back T samples, and that's back in service. Also, we've started our cross connection, surveys, inspections, whether backbone prevention. This has been a little bit more challenging than prior years with the COVID, trying to get into these places to help identify what needs to be done. We're trying to do a little bit more by phone call and email. We've talked to our state reps that we might be a little late with this. They just said to send in what you get. We understand that the process is going to take a little bit longer than usual this year under the current condition. Any questions on my report?
Jamie?
Yeah, hi, Dan. Could you mention or give a brief summary of the risk resilience assessment? I think that would have been mentioned in two places or at least one place. If you could just describe that, please.
The EPA wants us to do an assessment on our infrastructure, our wellhouse, wellhouse buildings. Any, anything that we think that could happen, whether it's, actually, I got it right here in front of me, cyber attack, tornado, flood, ice storm, drought. Some of the, the template they gave me doesn't, some of it doesn't apply, like earthquakes, fires, infrastructure failure. It's a, it's a, it's pretty big. I've had three meetings with our staff. Some of these things we've already talked about. We've got documentation on, but the EPA wants us to put this together. And then we're working through the details because I'm a little reluctant to share that much as we go through the vulnerabilities that we have because what they have down here as a template is nice because we can go off of that, but there's also things that we know individually about our plant that could happen. Also, we figured out today that Michigan rural water can also be a good resource as we're going through this. This was actually brought up during the first pandemic that we had with COVID, which was hard to hard to deal with because our staff was cut in half, and then it was brought up again about three weeks ago, two weeks ago, and I knew we were going back to full staff. So we're hoping over the, the next two or three months that we can get a document together to, to be able to tell the EPA that we have looked at this and put this together. But also, this is, this is a document that we're gonna have to redo every five years. We're gonna have to update it as we work for.
So is it something you've done before? This is the first time the EPA has asked for it?
This is the first time they've asked for it, and it's just, and I mean, and it's all municipalities.
Okay.
You know, but us being smaller, we can, we can ask for the Rural Water Association to help us a little bit with it too also. Besides OHM, if we, if we need to go there.
All right. Is that something that council ever looks at or needs to look at?
I guess we, I guess we need, we'd have to talk about it once I get it together. It's kind of the, the nuts and bolts of what we got going on, and I guess that'd be a conversation for me, Justin and Sean, to have. And it kind of talks about our vulnerabilities that we have, and then I think we would have to do something because there's some things we're gonna have to take care of, you know, as we, as we go through this.
Yeah, so some of that would be, would be sensitive information that we wouldn't necessarily want to share in a public packet.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jamie, just as a point of context, and I might be off on the year, but somewhere back in 2001 through 2004 timeframe, I think all communities had to do a vulnerability assessment or a a similar type. It was, it was a slightly different name than this risk and resiliency. Resiliency is a newer term, and it's thrown around a little more these days. But most of those plans that were created were basically kept confidential because they did have sensitive information in them. I mean, obviously, they're not confidential to Dan and his team and Justin, and if you, as a council member, I think, wanted to meet with Dan to understand it better. You know, that's certainly available one-on-one, but you know, there are certain aspects of the public system that maybe aren't going to be put in a packet, and they weren't done that way, from my recollection, by most communities, whatever it was, 15 or 18 years ago, when they did those vulnerability assessments also.
Okay.
And we do have some documentation from what we have done over the last 10 years, but it does not support exactly what the EPA wants on this, which I think it's a great, a great thing to do. I think that there needs to be documentation on these different areas, and we need to think about it. We have been thinking about it. I mean, once we had the tornado, that made us think about a lot of things a lot differently and what we're gonna do and how we're gonna handle it. You know, if a tornado hit any one of the wastewater plant or hit one of our wellhouses, or, you know, there's been a lot of thought put into it, but it just hasn't been put on paper, so I think it's gonna be a good exercise. It's just gonna take a little bit of time to do that.
So there's the potential for some some recommendations to come out of this that would be brought to council for action.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and I, I don't mean to, to make it like anything's a secret. I mean, we're proud of where our wellfields are, and we, you know, we talk about where they are, and we, people know where our assets are.
Yep.
We ask, we ask our residents to, you know, clear, you know, clear snow away from fire hydrants and all that other stuff. It's not that they can't know what these assets are, but I think everybody understands.
Yeah, I mean, cyber attack, um, fire, you know, what, I mean, there's, like I was talking to Justin about it, once I really got through it and into it, I mean, if something happened up the city office, how would we collect our water bills, sewer bills, you know, so I think it's gonna be a good exercise. It's just gonna take a little bit of time to put everything together.
Thank you.
Other questions for Dan? I'm clicking through. I don't see any hands up or yellow hands, so, okay. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Appreciate your good, your team's good work. Report number two comes from our community development manager. Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, Mr. Mayor. How are you today?
I'm doing just fine. Thank you. Warm and toasty.
City Council, how are you this evening?
We're here.
Well, thanks.
Excellent. Okay, before I jump into my report, do any of you have any questions that I could answer? Okay, I don't see any hands, so I'm gonna proceed. Excuse me. Planning Commission did hold the public hearing for the text amendment for the medical marijuana as home occupation. There were no comments from the public, and they had their discussion regarding it, and they have recommended approval, unanimous approval, to city council. I suspect that this will be on your February 24th agenda. Excuse me. The Planning Commission continues to review the accessory dwelling unit, whether accessory dwelling units, not whether they should, but how should they be permitted in the city? Excuse me. They also discussed how best to engage the public. And so when staff comes back to their meeting in March, we will have a presentation for city council that will be graphically oriented, I'm sorry, not city council, Planning Commission, that will be graphically oriented as well as a a draft set of, of ordinance regulations for them to start to mold, if you will, into how they want the, the regulations to be, and that way we can then engage the public for their input on those before going into the final draft, which will go to a, which will require the public hearing by the Planning Commission and then a recommendation to city council. The zoning ordinance subcommittee held their first meeting. They went over a number of different sort of basic meeting operations criteria. They looked at the, the proposed, the purpose and the scope of the update. They looked at the role of the subcommittee as well as the process they'll be using to make decisions. Excuse me. I think that the, it's going to be a very engaged subcommittee, and it's going to, I think there'll be a lot of fun as they go through this. They ask great questions. They're providing really good input. We're gonna set up Google, or Carlisle-Wortman will be setting up, I believe it's Dropbox, for the exchange of ideas back and forth, and for us to keep track of the different iterations of the sections that are updated. They're also going to start with the environmental regulations. It's a, it's an easy section to start with, to get their feet wet onto how this is, how this whole process will work out. That's pretty much everything right now. Do you have any questions for me?
Jamie?
Thanks, thanks, Michelle. Um, I am interested in the ADU topics. I appreciate the update on that. I was just doing some random searching around online and particularly about the, the public input or public engagement piece, and I came across the city of Ann Arbor's website. Under their planning website, they have a whole page devoted to this top of, top of accessory dwelling. I guess if you're familiar with that page. If other council members aren't, I guess I would encourage them to, I just typed in maybe ADU Ann Arbor, or I can pass on the link. It's a nice overview. There's images, lots of links to, you know, previous documents that were created. They talk about ways they've engaged the public in the past and a whole bunch of resources, some of which were even helpful. I mean, pointing you back to the MSU extension about ADUs. They found other cities that were more similar to Ann Arbor, and they talk about how they did in Boulder or in Portland. So anyways, from like a public input, public engagement or public education standpoint, I liked the Ann Arbor website. I know they had something similar for short-term rentals. I think it was under that name, where again, they had done a number of public input sessions, and there was a dedicated webpage just to that with, with links to all the documentation, and I can't find the link right now. But I do think even a survey was, was part of their process. I think what I'm finding now is behind the paywall of MLive. But anyways, so I just wanted to draw that. I'm, I'm sure you were already aware of it, Michelle and other staff were, but if other council members weren't, if you're looking for other resources, and I'm happy to share those links if anybody wants them.
I'm glad you brought that up because Ann Arbor was one of the, you know that our chair, Matt, is, is a planner in Ann Arbor.
Right.
And he provided some comments to the Planning Commission. Ann Arbor is in, currently in the process of amending their ordinance. When they first put it into place, there were some concerns that, oh my God, there's going to be this deluge of applications for ADUs. And I think he said in the three years that this has been, or maybe it's two years that this ordinance has been in place, they've had a whopping five applications. So Ann Arbor was pleasantly, I wouldn't say surprised, but they were pleased that their initial thoughts on how on how this would be received and how they could go about allowing ADUs fit the model that they, that they had intended. It wouldn't overwhelm the permitting process. It wouldn't change the character of neighborhoods or the city. And, and as, and hence, they are, like I said, doing some amendments. We plan to look at everything that they've done. We've actually already started, but we will be creating a webpage. Michael will be actually doing that, just like we did for the Housing Task Force, so that you've got all the, so that the public, I shouldn't say just you, but the public has the information at their fingertips. That idea of having that information at the, at the ready, if you will, is something that we will also be doing for the zoning ordinance update. Thank you again for bringing that up and reminding me.
Thanks. Thank you.
Michelle, what, in your, in your write-up on the, the accessory dwelling units, you use the phrase that there could, that the Planning Commission is continuing to review and discuss them in, and you say certain residential districts. What, can you clarify which residential districts or what that means, why, why the appropriate use of the word certain? What, can you clarify which residential districts or what that means, why, why the appropriate use of the word certain?
So, um, in a multi-family district where you're going to have, um, multiple stories with attached units. That's probably not going to be an accessory dwelling unit residential district, um, but your single family, um, detached. Is probably going to be those districts. So currently the R one A and the R one B districts.
And what governs the size of acceptability for a, an accessory dwelling unit?
Well, we still are, we haven't gotten to those definitive answers yet. That's part of what they'll be working through at their next meeting. That I do know that they, in general, they want the size of the dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit. To be proportionate with the principal building. So for instance, if you've got a thousand square foot principal building. They're not going to be, um, creating a mechanism that would allow a twelve hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit.
Gotcha. So are we looking, are we looking at like likely changes to our lack coverage and all that stuff?
There may be some, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Why has a question?
No, I just had a question. I just wanted to just, um, point out that we already do have some of these structures in the city.
Yes, we do.
So it's not like it's a completely foreign thing and I guess I wanted to say that to speak to what Michelle said about. Ann Arbor, you know, saying it hasn't changed the character of their neighborhoods. Well, we already have some, so.
Thank you.
Anything else, Michelle?
Not right now. Thank you, though.
Okay, I will, uh, jump down to Justin, uh, for city manager report, please.
All right, thank you. Um, so on an annual basis, um, we go through and review, um, liquor license compliance, uh, for the previous year. Um, that started in twenty sixteen and, um, good news is I don't really have much to report on that. Um, there, there. Uh, were minimal issues with liquor licenses over the last year, um, and so staff is not recommending, um, that we, uh, challenge. The renewal of any of those licenses. Um, we have had a number of events or, or potential events. Um, a, a lot of our normal ones, uh, come in and ask. If, uh, we would be, uh, permitting any of those, uh, events this year. At, at this point, I've, I've been holding the line of, um, we're not sure yet. I think we'll have to wait and see how, how this year progresses. For one of the, um, running events, I asked them if, if there was any potential for, um, postponing that until later in the year. But at, at some point, um, we'll probably come, have to come back and, and discuss when we want to start, um, permitting events again. I included in your packet an attachment to the city manager report, um, with, uh, an updated list of potential work session dates. And as I noted, based on Google poll, um, most of the rest of the Saturdays in February don't work. And so Sean and I did discuss. Potentially a Wednesday date, um, and inviting Scott Manzelta to come in and do a, a training. We did receive notice that, um, the, um, maintenance work on the Mass Road Bridge, um, is coming up. That's gonna be i- in their February letting, so they, there's potential that they could start in March. They will be keeping at least one lane open, um, to allow for, for continuous flow of traffic. But that does need, uh, per, per the requirements, that does need to end by April, by, um, August first, um, right around when the cider mill opens up for the season. We did get the Parks and Recreation Master Plan submitted, uh, to the DNR. Um, we also have a need to be call for temporary sculptures, so their cultural heritage committee is gonna be seeing that at their next meeting. And then we'll have to call a art selection committee meeting to make a recommendation to city council, so, um, that'll likely come back to city council towards the end of March. I don't know if any, if anyone had any thoughts on, on those Wednesday work sessions, but I, I was gonna send out a, a doodle poll to help set those. And, um, we did have a meeting with F and B about our contested NPDS permit, uh, for the Timdol and the, and the phosphorus limits. And I'm hoping that, um, our attorney on the issue, Varnum, uh, will be able to come in, uh, and do a closed session with council at, at your next meeting. Um, there has been some, some movement in that area that I think council should, should get up to. Um, and I think that's probably best done, uh, through a closed session. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I'm flipping through to see, oh, Paul, did you hang up or just moving?
No, I was just like, no, but it made me think that on Wednesday nights, and Donable can reflect on this, that. There was never ever a time when I came to Dexter in nineteen sixty-three, that you'd ever have a meeting on Wednesday night other than a church night. We're no sports activities, we're no extra activities at all. So, uh, we have pro- progressed or recessed, uh, or regress, depending on what your philosophy is there about, uh. Uh, the moral establishment of the city of Dexter, the village of Dexter.
Well, and let me just say, uh, you know, if, if nobody wants to meet on a Wednesday, we don't have to meet on a Wednesday. I just was.
I'm just kidding, Sean.
Okay, I, I, you know, you know, I'm, I'm trying to do what, uh, what I think is what we've, we've got a lot of things on our plate and. I was just trying to find a way to keep them going, so. Thanks, Paul. I appreciate the history though, too. Okay, any, any other questions or comments for Justin?
Did Jamie has her hand up?
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Jamie, for waiting. Go ahead, please.
Everything, yeah, thanks, Justin. Um, you had mentioned the, uh, winter newsletter and I know some things that came up in the past. I don't know if it's appropriate, winter or spring, some, summer, whenever. Um, we talked about, uh, I guess two things related to water, water usage checks, which I think has appeared in a newsletter in the past, how somebody. Troubleshooting or, or, you know, being proactive to see if they, if they might have a leak that they don't know about. I don't know if that would be in there. Um, and then we'd also talk about water quality information. That is something that people maybe were missing, but it's, that might go out in a separate thing. So I just wanted to. Those are sort of education pieces that came up in past meetings that may or may not be appropriate for this newsletter, so I just wanted to put them out there.
Sure, and, and actually, um, I'm, I'm planning kind of a, a, a water theme for this next newsletter. To talking about so some of the things that, that you mentioned and also, you know, like how a water meter works and how to check your water meter. And how to, you know, turn it on, you know, how to turn your water on and off and check to see if the, if, you know, water's still flowing through the meter.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
How not to flush wet wipes?
And, and not to flush wet wipes.
And who to call first when you have a problem?
Yes.
All the people that doesn't, that don't cost anything. With a lot of experience, to help. Okay, thank you, everyone. I'll move down to my report and, uh, try to keep it pretty brief. Um. Last two to three weekends, I've, uh, spent some time, um. Framing out a, uh, state of the city address and, uh. As I have in the past, not every year, but past years, typically in the first half of the year. That, that address goes into a newsletter to everybody and if council is, uh, okay with that, I'd like to work towards, uh, completing a state of the city address again. In one of the upcoming newsletters. Uh, if Justin feels there's room in the next one, I'll try to work with his timeframe. If not. I'd like it to be the one after that, but I, I have started penning it out, um, keeping it in a similar format as the past ones. And I just wanted to make you aware of that. Uh, does anybody have any issues with that or thoughts on that? I'll obviously tell you which, you know, which issue it's gonna be and you all know, but, um, all right, I'll keep, I'll keep working towards it then. Um, I haven't done that every year. Probably could, but, uh, it's been, I think, three years since my last one, so, uh, like to do that this year. I received a letter from a young man in sixth grade. Uh, he was given an English assignment to, uh. Write to someone out in the community, um, somebody other than his parents, somebody other than his teachers. And to talk about a, a problem and he talked about bullying and, um, how it, uh. It exists in society, it exists in the schools and, um. It was, when I read the letter, uh, which came not directly from the student, but through his teacher, uh, was a real reminder of, um. How it's important to be respectful and kind to those around us and. I, uh, responded back to him and thanked him for the letter and told him that I was gonna talk about it tonight and asked if you wanted to be. A part of the meeting and if I could introduce him to our student reps. And, um, the teacher came back to me and said that, uh, the young man didn't think about all the attention he might get if somebody actually responds to his letter. Uh, so he's not, uh, he's not, uh, obviously online here tonight, um, and, uh, but, uh, I wanted to just share with you that we have. People of all ages that are thinking about these things and the importance of those things. And anyway, it was a great reminder that we should be kind to one another and. All of these times and, and in all walks of life, so, uh, I reached back out and thanked the young man and told him I wouldn't, uh, disclose his name, uh, or the letter. And, um, but, uh, pretty special coming from a sixth grader, so I wanted to share that with all of you. I, uh, I wanted to tell everybody that I've been getting a little extra exercise in shoveling snow in the social district area on the weekends. I like to shovel snow. Anybody who lives around me knows I'm out with a snow shovel all the time and, um. It reminded me though to ask that, what exactly was our plan for clearing that area? When we approve, when we approve the maintenance, uh.
Oh.
I don't, I don't remember what it was exactly, but, uh.
The, the businesses would, uh, uh, Phil's business, um, was, was primarily going to do it. They had, they have their own shovels, um, although, um, we were gonna try and put in, uh, something, um. Even if it's in the tent, extra shovels and all, um, I have not gotten extra shovels to put in, um. And up until just recently, we really haven't had a lot of snow. As you know, um, uh, I literally had the snow blower in the car. When you texted to say you just shoveled the snow, so I was coming in on Saturday to do it, um.
But don't, Michelle, I'm not, I wasn't suggesting you had to do it. I, I mean, I'm, I'm a user. I've been enjoying actually sitting out there. I'm happy to say that, you know, other than the very first day of the ice fest, which had a huge draw.
Yes.
By the way, those ice statues are still there. Most of them or a lot of them are still there. Some of them have fallen and broken or whatever, or slid off if they've melted in the sun, but. Uh, they're still quite ni- nice to look at and I am getting quite a bit of use of sitting that space, so I figure if I'm a user, I can help take care of it.
Thank you.
I might owe the city a shovel because I borrowed the one at the bottom of the steps. And, uh. Broken off the, the little protection thing on the bottom is starting to get worn a little bit, so it doesn't, doesn't work as well as it did when I started, but, um. It, I, it's really interesting to, to see the number of people, if you're trying to pay attention to it, there. A lot of people like to sit outside. I, I have never seen the tent on with the, the forced air coming into it. I, I think we can do that now that it's. Now that places can have people inside for at least twenty-five percent capacity.
Yes, you can have three sides down and one side open, so that the heater can go on.
Okay.
I'll have to talk to Phil because he was gonna turn it on and off.
He, he, and he may be doing that, Michelle. I just wanted to report that, um, it's a pretty neat area, uh, gets a lot of traffic and, and such.
And you're noticing the different labels of the different businesses, correct?
Yeah, I, I've only, um. Gotten beer from two of them, uh, using the label, but, uh, yeah, yep. Some put the label on top and some put the label on the side. It's not, that's like consistent, but it's.
It's, it's there. As long as they have a label, uh, it, it's supposed to be on the side, but as long as they have a label, that's the main thing. Um, one of our participating businesses, um, does not have their license yet, unfortunately, um. By the time they sent their application in, um, it was after the January sixth. Issue, uh, at the state capital and that disrupted the mail service in the city. So liquor control is running about two weeks behind and unfortunately they caught, caught up in that. So, right now Dexter Pub is not able to participate.
Okay. Well, Michelle, I, I just wanted to report, you know, a couple of weeks ago, Paul asked me what I thought of the ice fest and. I figured I would talk a little bit about what I've observed the last two weeks, uh, taking care of that space a little bit. Dan, if I'm piling the snow in the wrong spot, you gotta tell me. I'm putting it out there in the grass by the. Between the sidewalk and the street. I have not thrown any onto the Dairy Queen parking area because I didn't want anybody to say we're, I was piling it over there. Uh, and please, I wanna recognize Butch, uh, last Sunday, he, uh, helped me out big time. He recognized where I was throwing it past the barricades and he came by with some. Heavy equipment and he made short work of moving it out of the way for me, so.
Okay, I, I actually had some fun with him today with the guys, uh, showed him your reports, so.
Oh, good, good. Well, he, he, uh, he helped me out, so. Does anybody have any questions? I just thought I'd add a little levity to the, this part of the meeting there, so.
Thank you again, Sean, for all your help.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, I will, uh, keep the track, keep the meeting moving. Um, there's no council member reports. This evening, so we're down to item J, which is our consent agenda at the top of page three. Ms. Fisher, I usually call on you to help.
Going to do it, but Justin fired it up and it's underneath all of you, sitting on it. Let me move it, see if I can move it over. Or I honestly can't see the items that are on there, so maybe somebody else can see it.
Can somebody else make a motion?
It's back. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. I move, we approve the two items listed on the consent agenda, bills and payroll and the amount of. Hundred and two thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and sixteen cents and the consideration of the PNC credit. Card resolution.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fisher. Motion by Ms. Fisher. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Wa. Thank you, Wa. Ms. Jones, if you would please call the vote on the consent agenda, please.
Okay, Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we're down to old business item K one, uh, consideration of hardship guidelines. Get a, um. Motion perhaps? And we can go into discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so, um.
And, and to clarify, is this the resolution on page forty-three and the associated application materials?
That's what I was gonna ask, exactly.
All right, if, if so, I'll second.
Okay, motion by Fisher, second by Michelle's. Thank you both. Um, Justin, am I turning this over to you or Marie?
We'll leave this one to Marie.
Okay, Marie?
Hello, council. How are you tonight?
Thank you.
Um, so we did get some direction back from the state tax commission on the legislation that was passed during lame duck. Um, there were also, um, some direction given out by, um, various. Organizations like the Michigan Townships, um, Association and the Michigan Municipal League. So based on that, I have replaced. So based on that, I have replaced the application that we had previously had on the agenda. With the one that was created by the state tax commission and you'll notice it's pretty darn similar. I did want to leave the section that we had for office use in there, I don't know at this point if it's going to assist the. Board review, but it does have the poverty guideline rates in there, which I know counsel wanted to talk about. So that's kind of what we did in the resolution, I, one thing I wanted to point out though, because there was, it is on, I'm sorry, I'm looking at a tablet here. For my packet. On page forty-six of the packet. There, we had a. Paragraph in there that the border review could waive the income tests for households with. Expenses that were beyond the ordinary scope and it's kind of interesting that when we updated the guidelines last year, the border review. That was something that they very much wanted in there, they wanted that flexibility, the way I read the. Item that was put out by the state tax commission, which is on page. Oh, the joys of being on a tablet. On page fifty-four, that is no longer allowed, now I have seen. There's been discussion, there's a lot of discussion on this law and a lot of confusion still, I have seen. Other communities make a resolution that actually chose what the border review could give as far as the twenty-five, fifty, fifty or a hundred percent. I've seen some resolutions that are leaving that section in there about the board being able to have the discretion, but the way I read it. At the, the STC was pretty clear that the boards are no longer have that discretion. So those are the kind of the two big things, if counsel wants to discuss the one paragraph that came up. At the last meeting to see whether or not what I did is clarified it and then the actual. Poverty guidelines, the, the rates, you know, that those were two questions that came up from before.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Marie, so on, on page fifty-four, which language are you specifically? Saying STC is prohibited, just so I'm. Reading it.
Well, in theirs, in their memo or their direction. It says. Removes the ability for boards of review to deviate from the adopted policy guidelines for substantial and compelling reasons.
Okay, so that fourth bullet. Okay.
Which is, in my opinion, a little unfortunate because, you know, you have people. Sometimes you have people that come in and they have like astronomical medical bills for that year, but their income, you know, there, there might be a little bit above the income. And that actually happened in the city two years ago to someone that had made an application. And we didn't have the language in there that they could deviate and so they had to deny this person's. Request for hardship. And, you know, and it would have been a one-year situation, so. Um, it's unfortunate, but I guess some communities were really abusing that.
Gotcha.
They took their way.
Thank you. Does counsel have any questions on what's proposed here?
Yep.
Yep, Ms. Sherry, were you able to get anything back from the folks in Ann Arbor?
No, there was no one available by phone, I did not get an email back, I looked on their website, they have not updated their website with the new guidelines, so the only thing I've got is the article that you probably saw.
Okay. So I bring up for the other folks, I've brought up the question because I believe it was M Live said that City of Ann Arbor had adopted two point two times the part, the federal poverty. Which I am interested in us doing as well, but I, I know it's higher than what the other units of government are and I didn't want us to be a complete outlier. I still think the two point two times is more appropriate. Just give a little more breathing room. To folks.
Okay. Other counsel, Paul?
Marie, in the last. You, you weren't the assessor at that time, in the last five years, in your knowledge, how many per year do we get? For hardship cases? There, there are hardship cases not, not related to the veterans that was added a few years ago.
Usually one or none. I mean, I know this, I know this from the treasurer side, we've had two residents that would have like ongoing every year. Received the poverty, both of them were widows or well. Older people. And both of them have since passed away. So last year we had none, the year before we had two, one was one of the, you know, continuing ones and one was the lady I spoke with that had to be denied.
So I, I guess my, I guess my reason for asking that question, you know, I was on the. Border review for Sial Township before we became a city and, and so. I don't think we ever had more than eight at any point in time that I can remember for the whole Sial Township, which included the city at that time, village at that time. So when you, you took like the eight thousand. Five hundred, as I remember the magic number at the top there of total taxpayers and you had eight people. Such a minimal amount that it seemed to me that, you know, as a society. There are certain rules you have to follow, but there are certain guidelines as well, and I remember this one lady who had. Was a professor at Washington Community College, walked in and something fell off the building and hit her and. And put her in a wheelchair. For the rest of her life and her husband, who was a lawyer, decided he didn't want her anymore after that and just gave her hell all the time to. You know, even survive and so, you know, we, we had to figure out how we were going to manipulate around that person there to give her a guideline of some type. And we could give it and, and we did almost every year and we never had any problem with that and I could, I could walk home every night after we did that and sleep. I, I don't know if I could have done that if somehow we couldn't have done that for her, but none of that was her fault or, or actions thereafter. So I guess I have a pretty good background of what's happened, I was on the. John pointed me to be the chair of the, of the. Of our new one here when we became a city and I, I just don't think that these are so. Out of line that the humanness, the. Can't shine through in this city to take care of the people that need it. That really have, have the issues there, so I, I would be, you know, encourage every, every one of us to look at this to. Look, look in your, your heart and your eyes or when you see the facts and, and make a decision that, that's one that we can. Hopefully do every time for somebody that really needs these, these guidelines to, to make, make a better life for themselves.
Well, and the one thing to point out, I think is important to understand with, with these, with the poverty exemptions is. A lot of people that are having difficulty from COVID, for example, they may have, you know, lost their income. Or, you know, something like that from COVID, if they weren't already. Kind of a lower income level to start with, chances are the, this, you know. Won't be much help because they're still the asset test, you know, so if I'm, if I'm living in, you know, in a house in Dexter and I have. A savings account and, you know, that sort of thing and I lost my job from COVID. The expectation of the law is that you're going to drain your savings account before you come and ask for this kind of relief on your taxes, so. It's not necessarily, unless, unless you're already, you know, and, and, and. You don't have that kind of cushion for yourself anyway. It's not going to be something that helps everyone, I guess is the point I'm trying to make.
Right. Okay, thank you, Marie. Okay, so we have a motion. And a second. I didn't write that down, who made the motion again, was it motion by?
Fisher.
Made the motion and Wa was the second.
No, Zach was the second.
No, I, pardon me, yes, you're right, Zach was the second.
Okay, okay, so Donna, Donna made it and Zach second, okay, I hadn't written down, I didn't put Donna's initials down. Okay, Zach, I see your hand, sir?
Yep, two-part question, one for Ms. Fisher, if she would object for us to change it to two point two times the federal poverty guidelines. And follow-up for our treasurer assessor if that would likely cause any harm to the city by increasing the, the threshold.
I don't believe it would.
Ms. Fisher?
Um, yeah, I saw, yeah, as long as Marie recommends that we move in that direction, I'm okay.
Okay, Ms. Griffin?
Yes, thanks, I, I think there might have been, in addition to that number, I think there was another option that. Wa had brought up last time. The disposition of assets in the past five years for less than their actual value or something to that effect, so I think there was also potentially on the table a decision to be made. If we wanted to leave that as any time in the last five years or if we wanted to say last one year, last two years, last three years. I personally don't have an opinion either way, I just wanted to draw that to people's attention in case they felt strongly about it and wanted to also include that in any potential motion.
That is a change that I actually put in the draft resolution that's in front of you, I changed it to. Or I, I have a, I have a note, I didn't change it, I have a note in there that. Five years does seem a bit excessive to me, you know, maybe like twelve months, one year might be a better option, but that is something, you know. For counsel to decide.
So the current motion is, is the, the two point two and then the five years.
Correct, yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Wa?
That's sort of why I have my hand up, I, I mean, I think that if Marie is comfortable with one year, that sounds much better to me. I don't know how others feel, but I would support reducing that for five years for sure.
Because the, the way, the way I kind of look at it, this, what this paragraph is trying to stop people from doing is saying. You know, hey, I'm going to give my son my car and, you know, and try to shed assets in order to come here and get this reduction.
Right, and that's how I.
People won't plan that five years in advance.
No, exactly.
Okay, so the current motion that was made and I believe has a friendly amendment to it is the two point two. Times the poverty level and I believe it still contains the sixty months.
I'm, I'm okay to amend to a year if Donna is.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we have a friendly amendment or that's a second friendly amendment, the new motion is two point two times the poverty level. And on page forty-seven. Believe it's one B. No, I'm not, two, two B, sorry, two B. It's highlighted there, instead of sixty months, that would say. Twelve months. Jamie, is your hand still back up or back up?
I put it back up, thanks, I just want, this is something that we, we adopt this every year and change it made this year and. It's, we realize it's not what we wanted or, you know, world changes drastically and another year, we have an option to change it again in a year, I just, okay.
Yep, exactly. Okay. I'm missing anybody, I'm going to ask Ms. Jones to call the vote, again, it's two point two times the poverty level and twelve months for two B on page forty-seven. Ms. Jones, please call the vote.
Okay, ready, Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Thank you everyone, motion carries, old business item K2 is consideration of city offices. This is a. There's quite a bit of information in the packet. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask for a motion first. And then let Justin review the memo or if we, we had a little bit of time on Saturday and. Had Justin start off a little bit, but we didn't have Zach with us, so I'd like Zach to hear some of that again. Is it okay if I turn it over to Justin to review what's here?
It's a good idea.
Okay. Justin, if you would please lead us.
Um, so like you said, we, we did start the discussion a little bit on Saturday and I went through. A couple of the options and a little bit about. The current state of the city offices. But just for a little background. On page sixty-three of the packet, go into a little bit about the city office facility needs assessment that was performed by partners in architecture. And we're currently in a, on the second floor of the PNC Bank at eighty-one twenty-three Main Street. The total gross square footage of the offices currently is around twenty-five hundred square feet. The usable square footage of that is one thousand seven hundred and forty-six square feet. The needs assessment called for seven thousand one hundred and seventy square feet, which would include both city offices and city council chambers. I, you know, I, I think the, the state of the city offices has been, has been discussed on, on a number of occasions, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna beat that too much to death. But it, it does come down really to. A couple of things, number one being square footage. And number two. Storage for city offices. Being able to store. The sensitive equipment that we have behind a locked door, being able to store the sensitive files that we have behind a locked door. And having a space where. Not only can, can, can we meet and have, have space to meet, but also have space where people don't have to take sensitive phone calls in, in their car. There, there are other issues that we run into with, with, you know, the, the kitchenette setup that we have, lack of workroom, so on and so forth. But over the last couple of weeks and since council last met, we did get. Some information about the, the options that city council had discussed. Specifically thirty-one twenty-six Broad Street. And seventy-six nine Ann Arbor Street, so the first being the former Encore Building and the second being the open deck crossing space. To start with the, for Encore Building. The information that we got is that it is approximately sixty-eight hundred square feet. There, there is an option to rent less space or lease less space if, if we desire. But it's a three-year minimum lease, there is an option for five years. With a base rent of twelve dollars a square foot, additional four dollars per square foot in, in what's known as common area maintenance charges or CAM charges. Which is around a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year in, in rent. The escalation is two percent a year, so add that two percent on top of that for, for each year after year one. The city would be responsible for utilities, including electrical, gas, water, sewer, all of the above. And the buildout, it's currently at a white box standard or he, he would bring it up to a white box standard before we begin our rent. And then any additional improvements above that would be seventy, would be around seventy-five thousand dollars, that, that was his estimate. He indicated that he didn't think that it would exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for improvements. There are. Current site benefits, including a number of bathrooms already existing. Our, our belief is that the reason it's, the, the buildout is less than Dexter Crossing is because he'd be able to use. More of the existing walls rather than, than having to add walls. But. But, uh. Maybe they have any questions on, on, on that space? Before I move on to Dexter Crossing.
So just, Justin, to summarize for, for the three year minimum. The. The investment for that is approximately a hundred and eight thousand a year times three plus an anticipated seventy five.
Correct.
So it's roughly four, four hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
Over three years. Correct, that's the entry fee.
And, and the cost is similar at Dexter Crossing. So the, the Dexter Crossing space or seventy sixty nine Dexter Ann Arbor Road. Has approximately thirty four, thirty five hundred square feet available. The minimum lease term is five years, uh, with a base rent of fifteen dollars a square foot. Plus an additional four dollars and fifty cents per square foot. So right around sixty five thousand dollars a year, um, in rent, uh, with a three percent escalation. There is also required tap fee. But the, the big difference is in the build out costs, so the build out is around two hundred and forty thousand dollars. To add the necessary. Walls, doors, fixtures, et cetera, et cetera. There, there is a fifteen dollar per square foot build out allowance. But that, that only brings it down so much. There's also. Jazzercise is next door, which does have, which does have evening classes. So if we were to have an evening, evening meeting, same night as they have one of their classes. Um, unless there's additional insulation or additional walls, um, that'll adjacent to. Jazzercise, uh, we would be able to, to hear their classes. There are only windows at the storefront, and the storefront is. Deeper than it is wide, um, and so there would only be a limited a- amount of access to windows for offices. And in both instances, uh, it would take at least ninety days, um, after signing. Before the build out would be complete, or actually ninety days after the issuance of building permits before the bu- uh, build out would be complete. So it's estimated even July, uh, for, for both of these, if we were to start immediately. Then, do you have any questions on, on either of those two options?
Not yet, I don't think.
Okay. Um, so like, well, a- as we discussed, um, on Saturday. Because neither of the options would be available until June or July. Kind of really the, the, the most immediate need is to find a place for, um, city council chambers. Potentially to meet. Um, and so there are two options, um, that were provided in the memo. St. Andrews Church at eighty dollars a, a meeting, or the Dexter Senior Center at a hundred and fifty dollars a meeting. As, as we've discussed before, um, the deadline to, to be able to meet virtually unless, unless we take action. Is March thirty first. That's, that's the deadline where, um, we can meet up to then, um, without, without reason virtually. But there, there, there may be some options there as far as extending that deadline. But I know council had, had discussed potentially entering into an agreement. One way or, one way or the other.
Yeah, I think the, I think the, that, that, if I can summarize the. Sentiment from Saturday's discussion was that. We should have a space that we can use regardless of whether the Open Meeting Act deadline of March thirtieth gets extended or, or goes away. And, um. Most people were, I think, interested in, in. Getting one, getting one of those leases under, under wraps. I personally was in favor of the St. Andrews Church one. And we, we talked about potentially bringing that forward on a, you know, on a future council meeting, so that we at least have a, an option whenever we need the space. That we can use it, for whether it's our, our board or another, you know, board of representing the city. Does, does council, just staying on the temporary. Meeting space, is, anybody have any comments about or feeling one way or the other on the, the St. Andrews versus Dexter Senior Center? Like I said, I, I prefer the lower cost option. I think there's plenty of space at St. Andrews. If we brought that back for a vote is, or, or that could be a vote tonight if people are okay with it, I guess.
Yep, one issue on the draft lease that probably ought to be addressed, I'm looking at page one oh one. Is, uh. If we're not gonna hold a meeting, we're supposed to notify Encore, which probably won't help the folks at St. Andrews United Church of Christ.
That, that, that'll be addressed.
I'll make the motion then, that we, uh. Go into draft with St. Andrews. We're going to the lease, uh, page one oh one and one oh two. Eighty dollars a meeting to begin, uh, when we have to start meeting again, uh, so that'd be in April. With the change to the. Actual entity that owns the property.
Okay.
I'll say.
Motion by Michelle, second by Knight.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you both. And I think, um. Zach, one of the other things that was discussed on Saturday and council helped me if I get this, you know, wrong, is we, we obviously do have. You know, we do have different peoples and people in different situations in their lives relative to either health or, or somebody they're with. And, um, we wanna be respectful that we're not forcing people to come back to a. You know, a room that they're not comfortable being in, so we had asked. Justin to stay in close communication with the county. And, uh, county health department and, you know. I, I think there was some sentiment that we actually might be able to declare an emergency if we felt that the situation still existed, even if somebody else didn't. I'm not sure if we have any further clarification on our ability to do that or not, Justin, but. I think that, again, the goal was, we just wanna make sure we're not forcing anybody to have to attend a meeting in a way that they don't. You know, don't want to, but, uh, but I think having the space. Available for use is a good, is a really good move on our part, so thank you for the motions, the supports and that kind of thing.
Yeah, and, and in terms of regarding the. Declaration of state of emergency, I was gonna bring some information back on that for the next meeting.
Okay, that'd be great, Justin, thank you. All right, well, let's, um, let's, let's take care of this motion at this time. Unless there's other questions on this, or comments from other council members, we have, oh, Paul, pencil in the air.
I, 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 I just wanna make sure that I, as I remember on Saturday, we talked about. Storage space with some of our things that we needed to store there. Has that been addressed, or is that just this plastic tote with minor items? Every meeting, is that we're just gonna put in that tote thing like we got up there at the. Senior Center now?
Yeah, right, right now, all we have is that, that big plastic tote. And, and I believe that. St. Andrews would be able to accommodate us.
Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure that we. That I understood that, what that was, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, good question. Okay, Ms. Jones, can you call the vote on that motion, please?
Yes, I will. Hubbard?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Uh, motion.
And there would be a, an area where, a closet where you can store that tub.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Okay, so that, that addresses the, the temporary meeting space. Uh, is there further discussion? On the rest of the information or other additional information, thoughts on? The other locations? Ms. Griffin?
Thanks, uh, I, I think still on, on the same topic here, um. Does anybody know off the top of their head, I'm, I'm guessing you do, um. The cost of the thirty, so the thirty forty five Broad Street, if it were. New for city offices, what a ballpark estimate if there was one for that. And then, uh, also ballpark estimate for eighty one forty Main, if the fire station were. Moved, and if that was for city offices, I know I saw, we saw renderings for both in the packet, but I don't know that I saw a cost associated with either one.
On page seventy, Jamie?
Let me pull it up, I'm, let me see if I can get there.
Page seventy, right, right above the. City council chambers, there's a ball, ball.
Oh, it does have, I, I see that right there, thank you.
And, and we do also have. Information on two other. Locations, well, one that was discussed and one that city council received a, um, email on earlier today. The former Dexter Pharmacy Building. Um, we have, we have some information on that and, um, the former Med Hub Building. We have information on that as well, if, if council is interested.
Just give us a square footage, please.
All right, so, um, the Med Hub Building has thirteen thousand five hundred square feet available. Not including, uh, a. Outside, um, external. Basically, a, a separate storage building. Um, and so for the, the thirteen five square foot, it, uh, is just under two million, so one million. Nine hundred and eighty six thousand dollars is what it's listed at.
State that again, please. One million what? One million nine eighty six?
Yep.
Okay.
For thirteen thousand five hundred square feet. And the former pharmacy building. Is up to nine thousand nine hundred and fifty six square feet. And.
Thousand nine hundred and sixty?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Those, sorry, uh, nine thousand nine hundred and fifty six, but yeah, nine, nine.
Okay.
Sixteen, close. Cando sale price. Uh, is between one hundred and fifty and one hundred and sixty dollars. So between, uh, one million four hundred and ninety three thousand. And one million five hundred and ninety two thousand.
Thanks for the additional information, Justin. So. The, the thought that I have after reviewing this. And looking at this stuff. You know, there's, there's no question. That leasing today is way cheaper than leasing in the future. I mean, we, we, we have a great, a great existing lease from the perspective of cost, it's not great from the amount of space that we have. But we're never gonna match the lease prices that we are currently paying above PNC, I mean, the. The cost per year at, um, either Encore or out there at Dexter Crossing. A lot higher, and when you think about the initial investments. You know, over three years, we're much better off buying something and calling it our own, or building it on our own. You know, the, the, the discussion on. Where, which one, uh, can be debated, the, Jamie, you asked about the thirty forty five Broad Street. Depending on. And depending on the, whether it's a first floor or second floor space, we were given a different price per square foot. Again, those were almost a year ago, I think last January. Is when Norfolk threw those numbers out on the table, and I don't know if, in light of the fact that they, uh, now have their. Two properties adjacent to that under their control. I don't know if those prices have adjusted or not, we'd have to ask Norfolk, and I have reached out to Sean LeFier at Norfolk to ask him to. Provide additional information and thoughts on it. But the second floor price there, you know, that sixteen, one point six million. You know, using that seven thousand square feet is. Is very, is in downtown, it's a little higher per square foot, looks like the Med Hub and the former bakery building. For a bakery, former pharmacy building on Baker. You know, are both a little lower per square foot. You know, but there, there would be some build out costs at the Baker Road site at the pharmacy too. Cause that's certainly just a one big open white space. And, uh. I, I haven't been in the Med Hub building in a long time. I know that's been refinished, but that's a lot of space there, it's a very historic spot. But I, I'm convinced. I'm convinced that buying is the way to go, and I think there's an opportunity here in front of us to. To really take a big step forward if we want to. You know, we can have brand new, brand new space, and we, we actually have cash and the ability to do this. There's funding scenarios that make this. Doable, you know, the, the hundred and eight thousand a year that we would pay to rent Encore. Is almost the same as what a bond payment would be if we were financing a portion of this. My, my personal thought is that we have. We have a chunk of money in reserves that could go towards a very significant down payment on this. We also have the ability to, to, uh, issue bonds that we've noticed in previous years. This is very doable, we could, we could, we could accomplish this in any number of areas, depending on whether. We, you know, depending on where we wanted to be, whether it was downtown thirty forty five Broad or out at. You know, either the two options that just came up today. But we're not, I mean, we're not that far away from being able to do this. If there's a will. And the other, the other thing, the other thing that, that, um. Is out there, which is good, is that, you know, our existing facility bond. That we. Have on the, the books, I think it started in two thousand and six. When we were borrowing to build the DPW building. Uh, I believe that our final payment on that bond is in two thousand and twenty six. That might be off a year, I can't remember, twenty five or twenty six. But where I'm going with that is, if we were to get into a situation where we committed to a building. We probably don't have to borrow the money for a little bit of time until we obviously get the building, and then. You know, if you, if you think you're a year and a half to two years out from that. You only have three years on the old payments, I guess the old bond payments, which would come off of our, our books, so to speak. Meaning there's about a hundred and thirty five or a hundred and forty thousand dollars. In general fund money each year that could go to pay towards the next bond payment that we take on. So I, I really think it's an advantage, it's an advantageous time for this council to consider. Doing this. I'll, I'll stop talking, Jamie, so you have your hand up?
Yeah, thanks, um. I think I'm in general agreement that, I mean, looking at a cost to lease for three years at four hundred thousand dollars, to me just seems. To your point, I agree, it makes more sense to buy something than to spend that much. Money leasing something, thinking that in the end we would still end up buying something, I don't think I would, I would be in favor of that. I've also, um, heard from some people who. You know, just sort of question the ability to work remotely, perhaps even more indefinitely, like some corporate. Businesses are doing, they're shutting down entire buildings and people have the option to work remotely permanently. I don't know that that's something that, um, people are interested in having happen at our own city hall, um. Some sort of rotating, or even in the, in, in the meantime, a rotating thing where half the people are in half. Time, the other half are in the other, um, the other half the time. Something I'm bringing to the table because it's been brought to my attention. I think that grain building seems super interesting, seems super cool. I've only, I've run by it once or twice and I couldn't believe there was a building that was that cool back there. I've looked at pictures online. It seems pretty cool on the inside. I've never been in it. It's a ton of space. Question.
Which one, which one did you say?
The thirty-five fifteen, this is the, I guess, Med Hub.
Med Hub? Yes, yes. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. The picture's online. It's beautiful. It's a beautiful space. It's also a ton of space. So then maybe there's a question of what happens with the rest of that space. I know, again, I was not part of these conversations. They, they predate me by many, many years. But I know there was one concern about it being within, the city offices being within a five minute walking distance to downtown. I'm not sure if that falls in that. So just bringing that up because I know that's been brought up in the past. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I have some interest in the pharmacy building, the, the Baker Road, where the second location of Dexter Pharmacy, this grain building, I think is interesting. Eighty-one forty also is intriguing to me, depending on what happens with the fire station. Although I agree, there seems to just be some general access issues with that location, which then I guess, so then I have a general question of how many, I know we've been in COVID times now, almost a year. I don't know how many citizens frequented the city offices daily, weekly, typically. I would be curious to know what the foot traffic in there was of citizens. Because I know personally, having lived here for three years, I've been here, I think I maybe counted five times. And most of those had to do with sort of, I think, extraordinary circumstances that a typical citizen wouldn't have. So I, there were probably two times I went there to cast my absentee ballot in August and then one time to get some paperwork about stormwater drainage around our property. So I'd be curious to know general foot traffic. So that's one question. And, and then also, and maybe this isn't something I could fully understand on this call, but just understanding if there were, like you said, we usually have the cash on hand, just what does that mean for future action on the fire station? Because I would say my personal feeling at this point with the information I've seen is I maybe have a greater sense of urgency about the fire station than perhaps city offices, given your recent, I think, success of remote work on the part of staff, which I appreciate. I know that may not be ideal, though. So I would, I want to better understand before making, before being able to make a decision about city offices, I would want to know how that financial decision affects our financial position for a fire station. So yeah, I guess sort of the, so those are just mostly a lot of my thoughts and outstanding questions would be, what's general foot traffic pre-COVID, since COVID? And then is there any additional detail about what that might mean for our ability to finance? Say we were all on board for a new fire station. What does, does that limit us? I'm not saying we are. I'm just saying, does that impose an additional constraint? Because if we made a decision about city offices now, that means we don't have the, the full array for the fire station. Or does that, do the, all the options that we have been talking about, are they still on the table?
Jamie, I think, I think all the, the, the difference, I think, between the city office building and why, I know your hand's up, but let me just try and answer one part of the question. I think the difference between the city offices and the fire station is just simply magnitude of cost. You know, the, the fire station is going to require a, a, a different funding source than we have the ability to do within our current structure. I mean, unless we were to just cut, cut, cut a whole bunch of other things, that, that, that's a different level of, of finance from me because of the sheer estimate of cost of what it is projected to be at this point in time versus the city offices is a you know, I, I think, I think the question, the question that you ask is, you know, how much, there, there's, there's a hundred different finding scenarios, right? But, you know, we, we heard last meeting from Marie that over and above the fifteen percent fund balance that is recommended by our auditor that we have, that's the typical recommended amount. We have about nine hundred thousand dollars or thereabouts. You know, in, in cash in our general fund. We also know that at the end of this year, we're likely to get some of that stabilization money. That's hard for the, our treasurer to always predict how much it is we get, but we always get some amount back. There's also a couple hundred thousand, I think, that's set aside. I forget how Marie put it, you know, kind of, kind of staff created their own contingency for it, just not knowing what was going on with COVID and the whole environment. And last year, they, you know, they put that two hundred thousand aside. Everybody can go back to the packet from last meeting and look at that. You know, all of those resources could be assigned to one or the other or both. And I'm, I'm not against using them towards both. I just think that the discussion gets clouded when you bring them both into play at the same time. I think it becomes harder to figure out. And I think that I think that the, you know, this one seems like something that you can accomplish that we could do if we could, if we could agree on the location. And I think that, that the not including eighty-one forty, the other options give you a much quicker chance to turn around the scenario that our existing staff are operating under. You know, because they could be either immediate buys and, and renovates or with the case of thirty forty-five Broad, you know, you're probably a couple of years away from being in a building. I don't know, that just.
And, and if I can talk about the, the foot traffic and remote work items real quick. So we, we're, we are still pretty busy, even, even in the midst of COVID. Between, you know, people bringing up plans and people coming up to, to bring tax and assessing information, pay their tax bill, pay their utility bill. You know, just a couple of months ago, you know, we had a, we had a major election and it was, it was super busy then with people coming up for absentee ballots. And then coming in to spoil their absentee ballot and get a new absentee ballot. People getting notary service. There's, there's a lot of stuff that we do up here in the city office. And kind of dovetailing that into the remote work question. It, it, it's really a question of city council expectations and level of service. You know, do, do you want Michelle to be able to be here to take permits from people as, you know, as soon as, as soon as they have them ready and are ready to bring them up? If the answer is no, then, you know, maybe there, there is a potential to, you know, for, for some folks to work from home a day or two or, or more a week. However, that there is still that need for that space for when they are in the office. It doesn't really change the, the, the needs of, of storage and, and, you know, where, where we put our binders and, you know, all that. Because even, even if some folks are working from home on, on a regular basis, when they come into the office, they can't just basically take their entire office and plop it into a new office. They, they really do have to have kind of their desk and their space. You know, we, we do have some part timers that, you know, could, could rotate desks. But as of right now, those folks are, if they do come into the, into the office, they're working in the conference room.
Wow, thanks for waiting.
No problem. Um, I guess, I don't know, there's a lot, lots to think about here. And Sean, I tend to agree with you that I don't really see, I, I, I think it's, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to move to another temporary location, especially given all the things that you just outlined with the finances and whatnot. I would rather see us just make the move and be done with it. That said, I don't, of the options that we have to look at for permanent spaces, I need more time to think about what, you know, would make the most sense there. And as for the remote thing, I, I mean, we have to also realize we are thinking about council chambers and that type of meeting space for other committees and boards when we, when we have this discussion. So it's, it kind of doesn't, I, I just don't think it's, it's really that helpful to factor in. Also, and this may just be me, I, I think it may be short sighted to think that we are all going to work remotely forever now. I mean, some people, it doesn't work for, and I'm, I'm not saying that, you know, you're saying, Jamie, that that's like to that extreme, but I just, you know, I do it. I've done it in the past. But it just doesn't work for everybody and everything. And I think a city staff is something it doesn't necessarily work for because they have to be available for all different types of people that they, that they serve.
Donna Fisher, I see your hand up.
Yes, sir.
No.
I've served on a lot of councils, a whole lot of them. And the one thing that comes from council to council to council is we want service for the people that live in this community. We want the best we can give. And historically, we've had people in the office that do just that. And before I would want to make any kind of a decision, I'd like to know from staff, either written or a chance to speak about it. Maybe by the next council meeting, Justin, you could give us an overview of what people are thinking. But I'd like to know what you folks think about all this because it certainly affects you as much as it does anybody else. So.
Thanks, Donna. Well, and we don't have to make, you know, I wasn't certainly suggesting we make a decision tonight. A couple of those options, you know, weren't even in the packet or, or there. Donna, did your hand go back up?
I'm trying, no, I'm trying to.
Mine did.
Okay, yeah, no, I saw it, Maria. This was, I'll go to Maria and then Wa.
Oh, me, sorry. Um, when you talk about like working remotely, there's, there's, from my, my position with my various hats, um, there are times when I really enjoy working remotely because I can get away from the hubbub of the office and really concentrate on what I want to do. But there are aspects where we have to have, um, at least some staff there, mostly involving like bank reconciliation, or not bank reconciliation, but bank deposits, you know, handling all the cash and checks that come in. When we were, um, totally remote access, when COVID first came out last spring, the city manager, actually she was, she stayed in the office and she did all of the banking, all of the deposits of mail that came in. And then also there's certain things that, you know, can't be performed, like I, I can do payroll at home. I don't like to because it's just not as secure. Um, so it's like a, kind of like a rock and a hard place with remote work. There's advantages to it, but there are things that I just cannot do at home, you know, long term.
Well, and to build on that, Marie, like everyone could pay their utility bill remotely or with, with a credit card online. But there's a lot of people who, who choose not to very intentionally. And so, you know, we, we, we are here for, for those people.
Paul?
So your last comment there, Justin, how, how many people? Instead of saying how many, tell me how many people come up there to pay their water bill every month? With the total number of water bills that we have in the city, monthly, they're not monthly, they're by month.
He is, I, I would say probably thirty to fifty percent.
It is, I mean, it, it is down from pre-COVID levels. But there still is a steady stream of people who, like for instance, today I, I fielded four phone calls of people wanting to know if we were open so they could come pay their taxes. Um, so sorry, my cat is just being annoying. Um, so yeah, the traffic is less, but it's still very much there.
Okay, Wa, you took your hand back down?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Michelle?
Um, I, I can piggyback off what Marie commented on. There are some things that I can do remotely. Permitting is not one of them. Mike and I have, are looking at ways that we could do online permitting. It's, it is not an easy lift. It is extremely complicated. Our system currently doesn't talk with the county system. There are just a lot, it's, it's like a, almost, I think of it like octopus tentacles is the best way I can visualize it for you. There's just multiple connections that need to be made. So online permitting isn't something that's going to be able to be solved in a hot minute. Excuse me. Like Justin said, there are so, there are so many files of different things that I'm working on any, at any given time. It is not practical to pack up a suitcase every single time to take it home to do that kind of work.
Well, and, and I mean, we, we, we have our property files and, and, you know, they're, those, those are those long tan filing cabinets that you see when you come into the office. And, you know, there, there may be something that comes up where, you know, one of us, specifically Michelle and Mike need to, need to see the history on something and that history is only available in the property file.
I don't have anything else to.
Okay, all right. Paul, I see your pencil waving.
Well, yeah, I, I agree that there are some things that, that cannot be done. And there, you know, when we, when we think about businesses that, that do remotely work, you know, I, I've got a family of four in Minnesota and they all work from home. Every one of them. They used to work downtown Minneapolis, two of them. Third one was in Columbus, Ohio, now still lives in the Minneapolis area, two, they have the two children do. They all work remotely from home. They don't, they don't have a problem with that at all. My son hasn't driven his car down, downtown Minneapolis. He said, I don't know if the car would even make it down there because he doesn't know how to go. Same, same thing with, you know, a lot of other business. But I understand that if there's something that has to be done and a permit has to be done and Michelle is the one that does that, or Mike, as in one or the other, talked to those people that they want some answers and they, they want to be able to get some answers. I've been in there when they've come in and talked with them. I know what they talk about, okay? How they've, how they've done that. We've all done that. Some of us have had to do that in the past. Go, go in there and talk to a planning commissioner or planning officer about that. So I understand that, but there is a reduction, there is a reduction of that. And I would dare say that if you think about, let's just take, you know, we were compared with a number of cities out there that had downtown offices. I would dare say if we had the same percentage of people in Ann Arbor that came down to their downtown office, that that place would be a nightmare every time they had to open the doors. That would be, that would be hundreds, that would be thousands of people coming down there. They've learned how to adjust to those things in that process there. And so maybe we ought to tell people, this is the only way you pay your taxes. You pay it, you know, by online or you pay it by sending in a check. And you let people know that that's the process we have anymore. And if you, they can't do it, you're going to comedy. I, I know that there's other ways that this is done. You can't just say that this is a problem here and not go back and look at other places to see how they do it. I know how, I know it's not done in bigger cities by, by any stretch of the imagination. And, and, and and Donna's mentioned about, you know, the comments from other, others, the staff. Well, they did make some comments here in the, in the documents that Justin summarized for us here. I'll start out, though, when we had a tour of the facilities, maybe was that two years ago, three years ago? Lord knows, time flies when you're having fun. But the fact is that we had one person, one person that went to the city offices to see what the issue was there. While they were probably close to twenty twenty-five, as I understood, went to the, to the, to the fire hall to see about that. And I think, you know, the idea that all of a sudden, because this is an issue now, that the city offices have a priority over the, over our fire hall issues, just because we sit and sucked our thumb for a bunch of years and let two other townships out there build stations, when we could have done it five years ago, started the process, probably had a bond issue and had five, four years of payment on already. We could have done this, but we didn't do it. So it's, it's our own fault that we are falling behind in this process here. So it's it's our own fault that we are falling behind in this process here. Well, I'd just like a few comments here, uh, as we see here. Uh, the convenient access to downtown businesses. Well, I agree that there's convenient access if you have a city office downtown. But a lot of people don't come downtown to go to the city offices. They come down to go to the Hackney Hardware, they go down to the bakery, the DQ, the beer grado, the pub, uh, other places they have, the banks that they have downtown, and they're not there for the city offices. They don't even, we got to realize that a lot of people that come to our downtown don't even go to the city office because they don't even belong here, I mean, belong here. They don't even live here. They live outside. So we have that issue there. The second thing he says is that it allows for convenient access to the city's most highly trafficked parks. Mill Creek Park and Monument Park for the sake of monitoring. Monitoring? Is that a job description that the city office staff has that they have to monitor the parks? I I I never saw that. I can't imagine that they would assume that just because they think that they walk down there for their lunch sometime. I I don't know what they mean by even by monitoring, okay? Uh, I I could go through some other other types of things here that that's said in this thing. But I I don't understand why all of a sudden this has become such an issue here, uh, that we're just going to switch all of a sudden from the fire hall, which we have been discussing for for years, which the issue there, and none of the staff, none none of the council people that were on that committee beforehand. And I've had no council member ever say to me, the city offices are not important. I've never said that. I haven't heard a council person say that at all. It depends on the priority that you believe you have. And that's where we are, okay? I haven't had one person, not one person in this city come up to me and say, you know, we got to solve the city office problem up there. Not one resident that ever come to me and say that. But I had a number of them talking about the fire. So I know where I'm coming from as it relates to the the information I'm getting from residents and the bad feed I'm getting from residents, okay? That does not mean that I can't stand up for the people in the city hall and I know the issues up there. I go, I don't go up there much often since COVID, but I go up there periodically. And I know there before that, that was crowded before. I know it's it's an embarrassment, an embarrassment to have city offices where you can't have a private conversation with your city manager or your assistant city manager or anybody up there. That's an embarrassment. That's our problem that we created that we didn't solve long ago. And we could have, we could have, this this crisis did not come up two weeks ago, two years ago. It came up a long time ago. And we just put it on the back burner and let us, similar to the same thing with the fire. We'll just let it go because we don't have to worry about it. We can let those guys sleep up in a place where there's bad stairs. We can let them be in an area which is contaminated and try to solve their problems that way or send them out to another fire hall that they have now to clean up. It's about time we stood up and said what we think is right and what we know is right for this city. And they and we can afford it and we can all push it if we get on the same page.
So Zach was waving his hand and because he doesn't have the the yellow hand option, I'm going to call on him next.
Yeah, well, I I do, but it's awkward and I may hang up on the Zoom, so I'm trying not to use it when I can use my hand. Um, so to re- reframe folks back to the issue of of offices, it appears we have a couple of different courses of action ahead of us. We can either do nothing and and stay where we're at and continue to have meetings at some other place that we're beholden to the whims of the property owner. Um, we can take action to do something immediately, either on a temporary basis or on a permanent basis. The permanent one would be, uh, the old mill building or, uh, the pharmacy. Um, or we could do, or if we wait, a permanent solution is likely three years, whether it's at eighty-one forty or at thirty forty-five broad. Um, things that I would like to see for, um, next meeting is more information on the mill, uh, that is a whole bunch of space. Uh, double roughly what the needs assessment for city hall, uh, was. So I would like to have or for staff to have a conversation with the constabulary um, to see if it would be possible to use that space also for the police office or, uh, the sheriff office for the sticklers out there. Um, and get a couple of other uses out in there to to use the space. Um, it is an interesting idea. Uh, I would like to hear more about that and, um, get something closer to the matrix for the options, um, because right now it's it's spread off. And let's say I'm looking at page sixty-nine and seventy, it's spread out and and not easy necessarily to do an eyeball test exactly one to one. I guess that's all I've got.
Hey, thanks for having your hand up there for a while there. Appreciate it. Julie?
Thank you. I hope I haven't lost my train of thought. This conversation's going on forever. Uh, the first thing I want to say is we have to remember we are a public entity. We are here to serve the public and I think that means we need to have a place that the public can come and voice their concerns, which means we have to have an official officer, office and people in the office. Um, secondly, I'm not sure when Zach said the mill, I'm, are you talking, are we talking about Med Hub or the mill?
Yep. The Med Hub.
Okay, the O D E Hoye Lumber Company. I would definitely like to explore that option. I I think that's a great place. Like I said, it's history. It's, uh, I would definitely like to do more research on that. But my my point is that we are a public entity. We're here to serve the public. We need to have an office that the public can come to someplace. That's all for now.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Um, Maria and then Wa?
Yeah, I just had a a quick comment based on something that Paul said. Um, if we were to, um, request that people use more online payments of things, I think then we we would need to seriously look at absorbing some of the fees. Because right now our model is that online payments are a convenience to the person that's using them. But if we want to push people in that direction, that might be a discussion to have. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Uh, Wa?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I guess I just want to say a couple of things. The first is I don't under, I I don't think that we're sitting here prioritizing the city office like it's some crisis over the fire station. We were in a meeting just prior to this discussing the fire station. I think we can talk about both things at the same time, and I think that we are. So I just don't understand. I I don't understand where that's coming from, Paul, to be honest. I mean, we're we're, we're talking about it. That's what I I I just don't, I I don't know what to say about that. But also, I would also like to, I guess, follow up on the Med Hub building. I think, yeah, that's an interesting thing to look at and discuss. And, yeah, it's more space, but I think there are other things that have been talked about, um, on different boards, um, like a community center. And I don't know if there's enough space for both of those things or the senior center or, you know, a combination of other things that that space could be used for. Um, but I think it's worth a discussion. And I guess the other thing, the one other thing is, you know, Paul, you may have not had one person come up to you and say, we need a new city office. I I know I haven't been doing this nearly as long as you, but, you know, I haven't had one person come up to me and say, we need a ten million dollar fire station. I've had plenty of people say, we need to address the fire station. But I have not had one person say to me that what is on the table right now is what they want. And I just want to put that out there.
Well, I'd like to respond to that since it was addressed to me, okay?
Yeah.
May Sean?
Uh, yeah, you can go next, Paul.
First of all, it's ten million dollars is not what I've ever heard about a fire station costing, all right? That ten million dollars is the cost of both i- issues put together. City Hall, Fire Hall. I never ever heard if anything over that amount, maybe because we sit around and waited for the escalation of of cost of living to do that has changed it. But I have no, have nobody say to me ever, and I've never seen a figure where it says cost, ten million dollars for a fire hall. If somebody can show me that, I'd be glad to see it. I don't think our architect has said that. I haven't heard anybody say that at all, okay? So that's the first thing. Second thing is when when I get a a copy of a of a city man is, uh, uh, inner city manager says that city staff recognizes that the city needs to provide better fire facilities for the DAFD. It doesn't say for the city of Dexter. It says for the DAFD. And that's how we have started now to do this, this, uh, uh, I I don't know if the word is, uh, soften or manipulate or whatever the word has to be to say that we are now talking about the DAFD in this big, it's the city of Dexter's Fire Hall. We're the ones going to be paying for it, not the DAFD. However, one fear, whether council considers it legitimate or not, that has been expressed by the city staff is that despite D F D, once again, that word D F D coming in, having two brand new facilities, Dexter Township, Webster Township, city council is going to support a significant amount of money on facility that, listen to this, that more than meets the needs of the DAFD. Not the city of Dexter, the DAFD. And then subsequently not have enough remaining to fulfill the identified needs for city offices. In addition to the city facilities not to have been discussed by council such as DPW storage. Now, if you can't read into that, what it says, pick page up sixty, sixty-five and sixty-six and read it again. It's very clear what it says. I didn't bring it up. This was put in here on our agenda tonight to talk about. And the di- the economy between the two groups has gone up. I didn't bring it up. It was brought up here. I'll read it again. A significant amount of money on a facility that more than meets the needs of the DAFD. The chief just had, we just had a work session. He told you what we needed. A minimum of sixteen thousand some hundred square feet. That's what it was. If somebody say, oh, no, we needed four thousand square feet or eight thousand or ten thousand or fourteen thousand. Chief, you're way off on that. We didn't do that. We listened to him on what he said. But now, all of a sudden, we've got excessive amount of that. That's not going to be able to be met because we're going to need the money for a city hall. We can walk and chew gum at the same time.
I'm not sure what that last part means, but Paul, the the, uh, when, uh, when I asked the fire board to be aware of the fact that the chief had put that recommendation out there and that we were going to be talking about it, uh, the chief actually explained that if we had more firefighters at each station, he might have a different recommendation for how big of a building to build in the city of Dexter. But that didn't, we didn't quite get to that part of the discussion today, the whole operational aspect of it. Okay, we didn't talk about it all. And maybe that's my fault for only scheduling a forty-five minute or what turned out to be a fifty-five minute discussion on it, you know, tonight, but it was a, it was an entry into that. It was a starting point there. I mean, if 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 you truly believe that the that the Dexter Fire Department is headed, you know, we have three full-time firefighters right now. Two of them happen to be downtown Dexter and one's out of Dexter Township. And the fire board voted, uh, when we set our last spending plan here for twenty twenty-one to gradually bring on another full-time equivalent essentially. Okay, and for those of you that it's a weird word, a full-time equivalent, but you know, our firefighters right now work shifts. They work every three days, twenty-four hour shifts. So to fill one slot full-time, you have to hire three, three firefighters. And we're, our budget or our spending plan that's approved sets that up to introduce that into our budget. But, you know, if if you think about, does that continue? Could that continue to the point where you had two firefighters at each of the three stations? You'd have to add firefighters to do that. You'd have to add about a half million dollars in costs to our annual budget, of which the city would pay a hundred and fifty thousand because we're about a, I'll give you a third, okay? Even though lately it's been more like twenty-six percent, it's like a quarter, so it might only be a hundred and twenty-five thousand. But regardless, there's a lot of years of extra firefighters in the community that go into eight million dollars. I believe eight million was the number that David from Partners in Architecture gave us when you take into account the cost of the land, the projected cost of the facility. Now, I agree, it's not ten. But there there there, there's potentially another service model here that could save the citizens of Dexter money as opposed to spending, having this generation face the cost of eight million dollars. If the council's willing to look at it and talk about it. But nobody, nobody has said that offices are more important than the fire station.
You have.
But what's that?
You have said that.
Well, I happen to think, well, yeah, you you discount, you, I'm also one from Westridge who you haven't discounted the opinion, if I remember right. Zach, you said that Joe was the first person from Westridge to give you an opinion on on the the fire hall. Well, I live in Westridge, so if now you're going to count me and then you're not, I'm going to call you to task on it. But what what?
All I'm.
But it's my opinion, it's my opinion that 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 we should, we should be, we should be taking action on that opportunity.
Item on the agenda.
Excuse me?
This is not the item on the agenda. We're not talking about fire station. We're talking about city offices.
I I am talking, it's my opinion, it's my opinion that the city offices is an opportunity that's in front of us right now. We have the financial wherewithal. We have multiple options. Two more showed up today. Or maybe they didn't show up, but the data's there. We should be thinking about getting this done. And it that it doesn't mean that the fire hall can't follow next, but we we're, there there's this cloud out there that somehow we have to get the fire hall out of there so we can put, we can put, um, the the offices at eighty-one forty, and that's the most expensive option out there. And we should be doing better. We should be, we don't have to choose the most expensive option for everything. We should be looking at ways to save some dollars. I'm ready to, uh, go to new business L one if everybody's done. I don't see any other hands up. Okay, new business item L one is approval of purchase of property agreement with Dan and Carl Waits, property at Third Street and Broad Street. For an amount not to exceed ninety-seven hundred. Does anybody want to make a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Is there a second? Uh, Julie's seconding. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, motion by Fisher, second by Ms. Knight. Uh, Justin, would you like to bring us up to speed?
Sure. So, um, as a part of the, uh, Third and Broad Street Reconstruction Project, um, we basically needed to acquire property, um, from, uh, two property owners. Um, one being, um, Dan Laura Waits, um, and the other being the Antwerp Railroad Society.
And then a meeting.
Um, the railroad society were able to do that through easements. Um, but for the Waitses, we do need to to, um, purchase that property. Um, the agreement that we were able to come to for that property is, uh, ninety-seven hundred dollars. Um, that allows us to to be in full control, um, of the necessary property, um, prior to our submittal to M dot. Uh, and it is required that, um, we are in in possession of of, um, the the property involved in, uh, in the project limits. Um, I don't know if Patrick or Marcus have any, have any, uh, support to that they'd like to add. Um.
Zach had his hand up, Justin, I think.
Oh.
Yeah, I was just curious where the nine thousand seven hundred came from, if we'd had an assessment or it's just that's what they said they're going to sell it to us and that's what. Yeah, I was just curious where the nine thousand seven hundred came from, if we'd had an assessment or it's just that's what they said they're going to sell it to us and that's what we're just going to take it for.
Sure. So, so we, we did have an internal assessment done. The goal was to avoid a full-on appraisal. Which if we went over the, the ten thousand dollar mark, that would necessitate a full appraisal. So. Through, through negotiation with the property owners, we, we came to a middle round of ninety-seven hundred dollars.
And had there been any conversation of us having actually acquired possession through adverse possession?
I think that would have been a much more complicated and much more expensive process.
So, no.
Right.
Anything further, Zach?
No.
Okay.
You have a motion and second on this, Mr. Keel?
We do, sir.
I can call the question then.
Amy has a question.
Yeah, Jamie has her hand up, Paul.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Jamie.
Couldn't see it.
Okay.
That's right. I just wanted to say thanks for, to those residents and other guests for waiting. Till this part of the meeting. That's all.
Yep, thanks, Jamie. Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Jones, I haven't talked to you in a bit. If you could please call the role to approve new business item L one.
Yes, Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. New business item L two is consideration of the approval of. The purchase of the twenty twenty-one GMC, a regular cab pickup truck for an amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand seven forty-two. Is there a hand waving to make that motion or? I know Dan wants to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Don. I'll second it.
All right, motion by Ms. Fisher, second by Mr. Cousins. Thank you both. Justin, any discussion on this?
Um, so this, this is just a standard truck replacement. It's replacing a two thousand and six pickup. For our Department of Public Works. That truck is, is getting to be at the end of its useful life. And we're purchasing the, the new truck through the My Deal program. Which is a statewide joint purchasing program that gets negotiated by, by the state of Michigan and. All municipalities and public agencies have authority to, to use that program. I don't know if council has any questions. Like.
Oh, so. Yeah, it's just relative to the, the charter amendment. Do we still have the ability to turn it in, the old one in?
That's a good question. And that's something I may have to run by Scott.
I mean, I, I realize that we're not generally, we, in the past, we haven't seen equal value to the auction opportunity that. You know, resulted from. Using that site Gov Deal or whatever it is. But I just, just curious as to whether that is considered under the purview of the recently approved amendment or not. So if you could, if you could look into that, I just, I'm not trying to stop from, you know, I don't think we need to turn it in to answer the question, but. I'm not suggesting we delay action, but I'm just curious about the interpretation of that. Marie?
Yeah, I just wanted for the new members of council, just kind of want to mention the equipment replacement fund. What we do is each quarter, the DPW foreman prepares, well, we do a spreadsheet basically. That uses state rates to charge the different funds for the use of the equipment. And that gets put in the equipment replacement fund and that's what is paying for this truck. So it's not coming out of general fund. It's coming out of the equipment fund that was set up to make purchases like this. Sewer and water, they have to do their own from the sewer and water funds, but the, but the DPW has use of this equipment fund. So I just wanted to mention that.
It's a way of paying ourselves so we can make future purchases.
Exactly.
And then, and, and, you know, like with, with the chipper, which is going to become due for, for replacement here shortly. The use of that gets charged to, to the refuse fund. Just because that's, that's its primary function. So different pieces of equipment get charged to, to different funds based on what they're used for.
Jamie's entry waiting.
Sure thing. Is there? Is there anything wrong with the truck or that would preclude it from being retained for another year?
Dan? Have the most familiarity with the, with the truck?
The truck is beyond its usefulness. Actually, last week, they taped the taillight on it. This is one of the vehicles that we use every single day. We use it for, you know, a little bit of snowplow, or we used to use it for a little bit of snow plowing. A two thousand and six and what we do every day, that's a lot. It's a lot of activity, a lot of work.
Thanks.
It's in bad shape. What it's doing right, it's just nickel and diamond us to death now, you know. Brake lines and, and different parts and the floorboards are rotten. I mean, it gets a lot of use.
Thank you.
Well, and I only ask the question about the trade-in because if it's, you know, if it's going to be a pain in the butt to work around it for a year. Or to store it, or maybe it becomes a piece of art. You know, while we, while we wait.
We do have a call out there for that.
Well, I, I, and you know, I'm just saying that, you know, there's a, there's a price to get rid, there's a benefit to getting rid of it too. And if it's allowed to, to do it that way, it might be something to consider just because otherwise we have to. Either wait for an election or pay for a cost of one.
Which doesn't make. And that's a, that's a great conversation to have because we have the same thing with the chipper. The chipper, I think we, the company that we're looking at said it was worth around seven thousand. So if we got away to election to do that. I mean, that could be sitting for one or two years, you know, along with the pickup that we're not going to be using. So we're going to have to spend time to get them up. And running again, you know, so I mean, that's maybe another conversation we have, trying to figure out how we're going to do that. We have had really good luck with selling our stuff. Through the Michigan State site. I mean, that last truck we sold, the salt truck, the trade-in was forty thousand. I think we got fifty-two or fifty-three thousand for it. So it is a good avenue, better than trading something in to get a little bit more monies out of what we have, depending on what it is.
Okay, so. We have a motion on the table, I believe, the second. Right?
Yes.
Does anybody have any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote.
Okay, Knight?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Item number, excuse me. Agenda item L three is discussion of paper of record.
I'll make a motion that, that we use the Sun Times News as our paper of record.
Okay, motion by Cousins. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Griffin.
Second by Griffin?
I think that the difference is the, the cheapness of it, even though the Guardian is a little bit cheaper. The fact is that it doesn't go to every household and I think that's important that it does. So I think it's, it's important that we do that distribution of five thousand nine hundred and fifty-two households in a four-eight-one-three Z. I realize some of those may be outside the city, but you know, the Guardian, you find it at Bush's or if you pick it up there, but it's not mailed to you. I think all of us in the city get it, so.
Okay, I have no problem with it. Zach, I see a part of a hand.
Yep, point of order that this was listed as a discussion item, not a consideration item. My second issue is that. MCL six-nine-one-point-one-zero-five-one identifies what is considered a newspaper for the state of Michigan statutes. And one question is, in order to be considered a newspaper, it has to be published in a general circulation. At not less than weekly intervals without interruption for at least one year in the county township, city, village or district where the notice is required to be published. A newspaper shall not lose eligibility for interruption of continuous publication because of acts of God, labor disputes or because of military service of the publisher for a period not to exceed two years. And provided publication is resumed within six months following the termination of such military service. So I wouldn't be comfortable changing to this until we've been able to confirm with council that sometimes news. Is considered a newspaper by state of Michigan for statutory purposes.
Okay, good point. Justin, I don't believe had made a recommendation to do anything yet. He was making us aware of cost at this point in time.
Well, and I, I wanted to ask if there, if there were any, any questions that council had before, before bringing it back for a recommendation.
I would be fine waiting until we had that information.
Paul, are you willing to wait?
I, I guess we're going to have to. It would be nice if we'd have known this beforehand or if the staff had have known it beforehand and given us that information. But I didn't know that that law existed as such till about five minutes ago.
Okay, so we'll see this in the future then, I assume. Justin, does that make sense?
My goal will be to bring it back to the next meeting.
Does anybody have any additional questions for Justin to verify or look into on this issue? Okay. Seeing none, we'll do council comments this evening and start with our two student members. Bella, I'll let you go first if you're still with us.
Sorry, I don't have any comments today.
Okay, thank you. Have a good week. Alex?
I moved by the story or the, the letter sent in by the sixth grade student to Mayor Keo. And I'm proud to live in a community where students so young participate in local government. And as mentioned in packet, I hope that we can find an impactful way to encourage kindness and respect in our community.
Thanks for that, Alex. Appreciate that. Okay, I'll start with Mr. Cousins today.
Nothing other than, you know, sometimes people take my. Tone as a, as criticism. Many times it's just frustration. I was on, on the committee when we started this discussion about city hall back in the nineteen hundreds and nineties. And we're still talking about it, city hall and fire hall. And. We had a village manager that was here and promised that she'd get a new city hall and she didn't get it and left here. And we've had another city manager since that time. I don't know if that was an issue or not, but it certainly must have had some effect. Point is that we, we got to move on. The fire hall situation has never changed. The time in nineteen ninety-eight when we first decided scattering this, so. Please understand that my passion is, is still important, but to me and. But sometimes it's felt by others as. As frustration and it, it sometimes it is.
Thank you for those comments. Ms. Knight?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Griffin?
I guess in the spirit of sort of friendly updates, maybe our family went to Aubrey's. I think maybe Saturday for lunch around eleven-thirty. Copious amounts of seating. It was really nice to be back in a restaurant again, so I'm glad they weathered the storm and I, and I hope. People who feel comfortable are able to get back out and go to those local restaurants. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Zach?
I am not going to say anything tonight.
Okay. Wow?
Uh, yeah, thanks. I guess I'd just like to say that, first of all, apologies for misspeaking and saying ten million instead of eight million. But also that if I sound frustrated too. I can get frustrated too. I mean, I think that we need to look to the future. And I understand that these are issues that have been on the radar for far too long, but. Dwelling on that aspect of it isn't going to move us forward. And I just hope that we can figure out how to. How to move forward together.
Thank you. Last but not least, Ms. Fisher?
No, thanks for me tonight.
Okay, we're down to non-arranged participation. I see Ryan has his hand up, so we have at least one member of the audience that wants to speak at this point. Ryan, are you there? I think you've been unmuted.
Yep, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
All right, good evening, council. I wanted to chime in to thank everyone for. The work and effort that went into identifying how to improve on our, those hardship guidelines. I mean, some of them may not end up being a big deal for most Dexter residents, but if it ends up helping at least one neighbor. In my opinion, it's, it's definitely worth it. Thank you for showing compassion as one of the core values of our community. I wanted to bring attention to a thing that is coming out of the Center for Academic Innovation at Michigan, which is my day job. Where I, I, I serve as faculty experience designer. There's a lot of questions in the community around COVID and the COVID vaccine and how vaccines are manufactured, how these particular vaccines are developed. How the distribution. And I know that we're. And my office has put together a teach-out, a free online learning experience, open to all residents. Open to all people globally, but especially relevant for us about addressing, you know, information and disinformation around. Around, around vaccines in general and COVID nineteen specifically. It's some material that was created a year ago for the first run of this with also like a lot of things newly updated to address the COVID crisis. So when you find yourself running into wanting, wanting the people who were interested in informing themselves and. And, and being educated about how vaccines work and being able to address this information that. That in my opinion harms our community through inaction. I definitely recommend checking it out. I'll send Justin a link to the document later to hopefully include. But it's, it's available at online dot UMich.edu, which is our Michigan online page. And it's primarily featured because it's, is a teach-out for this particular month. So other than that, I just wanted to thank you all for, for, for the hard work. And I am looking forward to seeing what, what comes out of the next session's reports. I want to agree with the, the talk of a need to address the issues for staff and city offices. I know there's a lot of things that are, you know, pressing and, and difficult, but you know, of the things that we can't control. You know, the city can't control its work environment for its employees. I think that it has a duty to do so in a way that is. You know, healthy considering the restrictions of the pandemic, that's respectful considering the. Considering the needs of residents and the needs of staff members to have confidential and private discussions. And I hope that whatever we choose for a space, whether it be temporary or permanent, we try to make sure that it's accessible. Because I know that sometimes, you know, moving into, you know, new temporary spaces, you don't necessarily have the ability to make sure that they're accessible for all members of our community. But that's just something I would like everyone to keep in mind as they're searching through locations. If they are accessible, you know, for folks, folks with disabilities. And if not, how much will it cost to retrofit them to make them available? I, I greatly appreciate the fact that Zoom has allowed so many folks with disabilities to. Participate more frequently in government, myself included. And when we do go back in person, I would like to make it easier for those who do have mobility issues to also come join us. Join the discussion of helping to make our city better. I, I greatly appreciate being able to be here with neighbors and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan, for your comments tonight and for listening in. Justin, do we have any other hands up?
I, I don't see any.
I'm not seeing any either. So with that, I'll, uh, wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day. And, uh, we'll see you later this month, if not sooner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody stay safe.
Get a motion to adjourn in a second.
Cousins makes a motion to adjourn.
And I'll accept Ms. Knight for the second. All those in favor, signify by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you all.
Night, everyone.
Thank you. Night.